Okay, I'm gonna call this Harwich Planning Board meeting to order. It's Tuesday, June 25th at 6:30. As we call this meeting to order, recording and taping notification is required by law. The town may audio or video record this meeting, which we're doing. Anybody that intends to do the same, please notify the Chair. Anyone? Okay, thank you. So, a couple of comments before we get rolling along here. We've got a lot of enthusiasm, and with a lot of enthusiasm, sometimes comes a lot of passion. Let's be polite to one another. Let's understand that everybody's gonna get a chance to speak. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six issues to discuss. Not one, six. Okay? We're gonna try to get through this agenda, and if we have to stay, we'll stay. Okay? So, with that, I'd like to begin the public hearing with a continuation of PB 2019.
Do you want to dispose of the three we know aren't going anywhere this evening?
We can do that, Charlene. Actually, I wanted to start out that way.
Why don't we start? I think that's the better route, myself.
So, we've got a couple of continuations here that we can dispose of very quickly. So, we'll start with D, and then we'll go to E, and then we'll go back to letter A, which is the continuation of Harwich Retail.
Actually, you can go to F, too, because they've asked for continuance.
That's right, conversion.
Yep.
Okay, so continuation. PB 2019-14, Town of Harwich Cemetery. Actually, it's the burial ground. As owner, seeks approval of a site plan review, special permit with waivers to establish a pet burial grounds with walking paths, parking area, and gazebo. This property is located at 276 Queen Anne Road, MAP 69, parcel M1, in the I-L zoning district. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-51 and -55, continued from 4/23/19. Please note, there is a request to withdraw without prejudice, and that has been received and is part of the record.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we received an email from Christopher Clark, the Town Administrator. The Cemetery Commission has unanimously voted to return 276 Queen Anne Road to the Board of Selectmen. Therefore, as Town Administrator, I request withdrawal without prejudice of the pet burial ground application.
Move to grant the request to withdraw without prejudice.
A second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Okay, next, we have another continuation. PB 2019-17, David Cook is applicant. Valerie Hewitt, representative of the Michael I Sabina Trust, is owner, seeks approval of site plan review, special permit with waivers, and use special permits for mixed use. The application proposes to construct a 2,400-square-foot office building with two dwelling units above. Certain pertinent improvements are also included in the proposal, and specifically includes a private shared parking lot easement with a butter Villaroma. The property is located at 282 Route 28, MAP 12, parcel G2-1, in the C-H-1 zoning district, and is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-9-51-51.M and 55, continued from May 30th, 2019. Please note, request to withdraw without prejudice has been received.
So, we did receive a letter from David Cook, June 9th, to whom it may concern, a request to withdraw without prejudice with regard to the above referenced matter of my application, including that a new filing fee not be required, provided a new application is submitted within 365 days. Staff did not spend a lot of time reviewing this, because the plan was incomplete, so I would have no problem if the Board wants to waive that filing fee, provided it's reapplied for within 365 days of today. And it's 365, because it's a leap year.
Move to grant the request as submitted.
Second. Second. Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, Charlene, we have PB 2019-22. Ronald M. Romondino and Lisa Stoker, as owners, seek approval of site plan review, special permit and special permits for mixed use and village commercial overlay with waivers. This application proposes a 930-plus-or-minus square-foot commercial addition, conversion of the second floor from residential use to commercial use, and maintaining an existing residential dwelling unit at the rear of the building. The property is located at 521 Route 28, MAP 14, parcel P3-A, in the C-V and V-C overlay districts, and is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-51.L, -51.M, and -55.
This afternoon, you did, or I received, an email from Attorney William Kroll, seeking a continuance of this application to July 23rd.
Move to grant the request to continue the matter to July 23rd.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now, the moment we've all been waiting for.
You don't need to read the whole thing into the record again.
Okay. What about the latest correspondence that we've received?
I provided you with that note, which is right up above.
Right here. Perfect. All right. Okay, so, we're going to continue. PB 2019-03, Harwich Retail LLC is applicant. I think all of you have heard this read into the record since January, so we're not gonna continue to do that. I would also like to state a couple of things here. First of all, we have received more letters. I think everyone has been very good about writing and letting us know how you feel, and I applaud you for doing that, and, believe me, we're grateful for it. I don't like people standing in doorways, because I spent a career in environment health and safety, and I know what can happen in the event of a fire. So, I'm gonna ask you one more time, very politely, please get out of the doorways. Okay? So, as of June 25th, 2019, letters received, letters received as of 4:00 PM since the last meeting on June 11th for interested parties regarding planning board case PB 2019-03, Harwich Retail LLC. Twenty letters have been received, and board members have copies, and the originals are in the case file. This is the same as every meeting we've had. The general comments from these letters mirror concerns raised by the other letter, primarily refer to the Cape Cod Commission, that's been loud and clear, traffic issue, again, common thread through all of them, community character, and historic preservation. Those are three common themes that we've seen. You've made your point, and you've done it well, and I applaud you for that. These are the letters that we received. From Ms. Patricia O'Neil, we received a letter from Ms. Suzanne Moody, and Mr. George I Rockwood Jr., Laurel Belwine, I hope I'm pronouncing that. If I'm screwing that up, I apologize. Mary Kay Albus with copies from Eastham, re-DRI referral. Bob Kahn and Marc Casey, William Vronos, Barbara Wasserman, Janet Lincoln, and Michael Lincoln, Alfred Roberts Jr., Norma A. Kolokowski, Robert V. Albus, Frances L. Pugsley, Douglas Carlson, Nancy Vale Shoemaker, Duncan Berry, Sally Urbano III, where's Sally? Good job, Sally. Thank you. And Kathy Anderson. That was the most recent. So, these are all in the record. Thank you so much. That was a good job. Okay? So, let's be polite. Let's remember that we live here just like you. This isn't a power trip. I could, you know, I'm a volunteer, just like everybody else. Okay? But please understand, folks, we've been discussing this for six months. I understand the passion. I get it. Okay? I also want you to understand that you're gonna hear from the folks who'd like to put this building up. They have met every condition when it comes to zoning, town staff comments, architecture, traffic, demolition, that's been held off, Cape Cod Commission, all right? And they've even offered, I saw in this letter, $20,000, just as a part of the funding to save this place. Okay? I think that's pretty good. Okay? Now, what you have to understand is we have zoning that we can't change overnight. We have a company that's made an application, and they've done it well within the standards of the law. They've also come to talk to folks, and they've made changes to their plans based on your input. All right? So, we're gonna listen to everybody carefully. I'm not sure whether there's going to be a decision tonight or not. I don't know. But please remember, we're trying to do the best to listen to everybody and do the right thing. Okay? So, with that, Charlene, Matt, please.
Good evening. For the record, MAP on BACI with Bowler Engineering. As you stated, we've submitted for a site plan and also for a waiver of parking. Along our six months of permitting with the planning board, we've addressed stormwater, traffic, utilities, police department comments, landscaping, et cetera. Happy to get into those details. That's why we're here. I'm gonna spare the board too much more info, but we're here if you have questions on the specific items. Be happy to address them in detail. We thought the most appropriate thing would be for us to read the letter to the planning board that the applicant wrote to the planning board into the record, and then we're here if you have any questions on specific items. That's fine.
Hello. Again, Chad Brubaker with LaSkye Development, Harwich Retail LLC. And as Matt had stated, we've written a letter to the planning board, and we had done a lot of listening at the last few hearings, and just felt that that would be the best way to kind of summarize our, you know, response and comments, and, for lack of a better term, you know, kind of closing statement of the merits of our application. So, I'm just gonna read through the letter. We'll add a few comments here and there, if appropriate, but basically just gonna read the letter. So, Dear Town of Harwich Planning Board, thank you for your review of our application over the past several months. We appreciate the time and consideration that the board has placed on our project. We have invested a lot into this application and have truly made an effort to work with the board and the community on creating a successful project. We understand that there are many different opinions within the community, but we'd like to highlight the following key points associated with our application. The first point, zoning. As the board has referenced on numerous occasions, our general retail sales use is permitted by right in the commercial highway CH1 zoning district. The property has been zoned this way for many years, and the opportunity to rezone the area has existed long before our application. Our building is almost exactly the same size as a pre-existing retail building, currently home to Domino's Pizza and several other tenants, just located a few parcels to the west. That property, that building, is approximately 50 by 150, and the 150 faces the road, and just as a kind of highlight that size, it's depending on how you calculate the awning that overhangs the front of that building, it could be up over 8,000 square feet, and our frontage is about half of that, 85 feet facing the road versus 150 feet of that existing building. You know, any talk of future zoning changes to this area should not have an impact on our application. The second point is town staff comments. Dating back to January, we have received feedback from and had numerous discussions with representatives from all interested town parties. I think Matt has done a good job through all the hearings of kind of outlining those. We've had representatives from the police department here to address specific comments and concerns. We have addressed all comments and have no outstanding issues to resolve with staff. Architecture. Although the planning board has no formal authority to request architectural changes, we have made an effort to improve our design based on feedback received. We believe that our design is above and beyond the requirements of the zoning ordinance and fits with recently approved projects and the community. We have made changes based on, as I said previously, approved projects in Town of Harwich. One project that was noted previously is the Cumberland Farms Gas Station with Retail Convenience Store located at 578 Main Street in Harwich. Traffic. There's been a lot of conversation about traffic, but we have undergone an extensive permitting process with Mass DOT in parallel with our application to the planning board. We have responded to multiple sets of comments from Mass DOT and have provided them with extensive information, analysis, et cetera. They have approved our design and are prepared to issue a permit upon receipt of local approvals. Additionally, we have responded to multiple sets of comments relative to traffic from the Harwich Police Department, and have satisfied their concerns relative to the same. The proposed use is a low-trip generator and is not anticipated to appreciably impact traffic in the area, as supported by Mass DOT's approval and the review by the Harwich Police Department. As an aside, the project will generate significantly less traffic than the Cumberland Farms project that was referenced above. Next point is the demolition of the existing house. One-year demo delay was placed on the existing house on-site in September 2018 by the Town of Harwich Historical Commission. The house has no official historical designation. This process is being handled separate from our application to the planning board for the project. All that said, we have expressed a willingness to work with the local community to save the house or perform a controlled demolition to salvage significant portions of the house. The final point is the Cape Cod Commission. We strongly believe that our project has no regional impact. Our project falls far below all mandatory referral levels. We have heard repeatedly, not from the board, that we should go on the opposite side of Town Line in Dennis, a mere .2 mile, 2 tenths of a mile away, and that we are not wanted in Harwich. If the project had true regional impact, we would not be encouraged to move down the street to a different neighborhood. To be compared with the existing retail buildings currently home to Dollar Tree and Ocean State Job Lot located at 714 Main Street in Dennis is unfair. That retail complex is 63,500 square feet of building with 340 parking spaces. Just to put that into context, that's eight and a half times the size of our building and over 10 times as much parking. And as Mr. Ideman had said, from the Cape Cod Commission, the commission does not exist to keep local boards from having to make a difficult decision. Wanted to add a point here, just based on some recent letters and discussion on the town of Eastham and the project there that was referred, and just wanted to highlight a few things that weren't necessarily in those letters, and that, you know, just to point out that there's very different circumstances in each project. First of all, the size of that building was over 9,100 square feet versus 7,400 here, so it was over 20% larger than our existing building, you know, within 10% of the mandatory referral level that project was. There was multiple overlay districts on that project with wellhead protection. It was also part of a four-lane highway with a regional, there was some regional impact from the Orleans Rotary to Provincetown, and they were looking at it kind of as a master plan with some access points. And just to highlight there, the traffic counts along Route 6 in that stretch are more than double what they are at this location. So, based on the above, we respectfully request that the planning board vote to approve our application at the June 25th, 2019 hearing. We would suggest the following conditions be placed on our approval. One is the waiver of the 10 additional parking spaces proposed in the location of the existing house on-site. This waiver would allow us to continue discussions with the community to save the house. That is a contingent, if the board would need to waive those parking spaces for us to save the house, so just wanted to highlight that. The applicant agrees, we would agree to continue to work with the town and community to save the house on-site. We are willing to offer the house, along with a $20,000 donation to the Town of Harwich or a local nonprofit organization for use on rehabilitation of the house. We are also willing to work with private investors who may be interested in the house, subject to mutually agreeable terms. And just to highlight why we pulled that, you know, some mutually agreeable terms with the private investors, we just want to make sure that that money gets used towards the house. We don't want a private investor to come, say, "We'll take the house and your $20,000", and then skip town. So, any agreement is subject to the lot split receiving approval from the Town of Harwich Zoning Board of Appeals. If an agreement approval cannot be reached, the applicant agrees to work with the local community to salvage and donate key features of the home as part of a controlled demolition of the structure. We believe that until the planning board renders a decision, it is difficult to have concrete negotiations on the house, when the main goal of some members of the community is to block the project altogether. Approval, subject to, third condition would be approval subject to receipt of a driveway permit from Mass DOT. And then finally, the applicant agrees to remove southernmost two arborvitae trees currently planted within the Depot Road West right-of-way in front of 12 Depot Road West, as requested by the Harwich Police Department. Finally, we remain committed to working with the town and community on this project. Thank you again for your time and consideration of our application.
Thank you very much.
In a couple, I'm sorry, just a couple items I wanted to note was, we did read Charlene's staff memo, and she outlined a few different scenarios on how the board wanted to act, and we reviewed her suggested conditions, should the board want to move forward, and we have no concerns with those conditions. And regarding architecture, we did submit a couple of different architectural options at the last hearing, and we'd be willing to, whichever one the board preferred, we'd be willing to go with.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, Charlene?
Well, when I wrote this staff report, we had only received two additional letters. As you read, we had many more. Just a couple of things that we've talked about previously. The existing lot line between the two parcels would need to be expunged. The following condition is recommended prior to the issuance of a building permit. An approval not required plan shall be filed to the planning board showing the merging of 48 and 42 Route 28, shown on assessors map. Ten is parcel D41 and D42. If the existing structure is to remain, and A, it will be on the same lot as a retail building and used for an allowable use, whether by right or special permit, a revised site plan would be required, and the applicant would be required to return to the planning board to modify the site plan and special permit for use, if applicable. Or B, if it will be on its own lot, but a different configuration in the lot area, a revised site plan would be required, and the applicant would be required to return to the planning board to modify the site plan. Four, the requested waiver for the parking at this time appears to be adequate and appropriate. The applicant has provided a parking exhibit dated January 7, 2019, from Bowler Engineering, showing the availability of an additional 10 parking spaces. Should it be necessary, of course, this does assume that the structure at 52 Route 28 will be demolished. Reminder, as mentioned, that this is currently on a demolition delay imposed by the HDHC. Five, the access onto Depot Road West will have to comply with Harwich DPW requirements. Six, it is recommended that the hours of operation, including deliveries, trash removal, and related, be restricted to no earlier than 7:00 AM and no later than 9:00 PM. Seven, outdoor areas for display has been shown on the plan. This area is outside the setback requirements and would not impede pedestrian traffic along the front walkway. However, per the zoning bylaw, zoning code use table, outside display for retail sales requires a use special permit. It is recommended that this be made a condition. Eight, recommend standard conditions be imposed. Nine, at this time, it appears that the planning board has three options, actually, there is a fourth, which I'll mention, available due to the fact that there are currently only five board members eligible to vote on this application. Mr. Joyce, Ms. Meslowski, Mr. McParlin, Mr. Chadwick, and Mr. Harris. I do believe this next is no longer valid. Originally, Chairman Joyce was going to be leaving us after this meeting. He's now been reappointed to the planning board to serve at least until September, when he'll be moving. Again, I'm gonna chain you to the desk, so you can't. The three options, and I'll mention the fourth, available are, option one, vote on the application. Option two, allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice, and that had to do with if we were no longer gonna have five members eligible. Option three is vote to refer the application to the Cape Cod Commission as a limited discretionary referral, but there is a fourth. The board can refer to the Cape Cod Commission for technical review, if you chose to. Ten, before the board takes any action, and by any action, I mean any action on whether you are ready to vote on the application, I'm not talking about allowing for withdrawal without prejudice or vote to refer it to the Cape Cod Commission, but if the board is ready to move forward with rendering its own decision, the board should close the public hearing, which means no further input from the applicant, the audience, or staff, and the members cannot ask questions of the applicant or the audience. You can ask questions of staff, but it's only procedural questions that you can ask. I do believe that the board should carefully discuss each of the options available. As always, I provide the board with various vote options and recommended conditions. You know, if the, whatever the board decides to do, and I don't know what you're gonna do this evening, but if you do decide to vote on this, you know, I think it would be appropriate to close the public hearing, and before you render any decision, talk about the waivers, talk about the findings of fact, and talk about conditions that you may want to impose.
That's, I think that's great, Charlene, and honestly, I think everybody in the room deserves to hear that.
Right. And just for everybody's information, if the board does vote to move forward on its own, meaning not refer it to the Cape Cod Commission, from the date of the close of the hearing, you actually have 90 days to make a decision and file it with the town clerk's office. So, you do have time once the hearing is closed.
Sure.
So, you have time to think about things methodically and clearly, and, you know, so.
So, thank you all very much. This is your. Mary, please.
Your question, Mr. Chairman, Charlene. Just curious, with the discussion after the, after closing the public hearing, any reason not to do?
Mary, can you bring a microphone closer to you?
Is there a reason you're recommending that, not just doing that as a part of the public hearing during our regular discussions?
I'm sorry. Say again?
You had suggested if we decide to move forward and close the public hearing and then discuss each of the options amongst ourselves, after the close of the public hearing, is there a reason why you're recommending that we don't do that during the open public hearing?
Well, I mean, you can always discuss it during the open public hearing.
That was just my question.
Absolutely. Yeah. There's nothing precluding you from doing that.
Okay.
But as you know, before the vote, board can vote, you need to close the public hearing, at which point there is no more input from the public, from the applicant, from staff.
Understood. I just didn't know if there was, if there was any other.
No, just because this has been so agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Folks, I love the way you're doing this. This is the most civilized, this is the most civilized approach I've heard. I'm gonna ask, I'm going to ask, please, we've got a lot of people that want to talk, right? And I'd like to accommodate you, and this board would love to accommodate you. No applause, please. No boos. Civil. Make your point. This is your opportunity. You're doing a real good job, too. Right? And I, I'm gonna tell you, we've gotten a lot of feedback. Okay? I've read every letter, every one. You guys have done a great job. Okay? If you want to be mean-spirited about it, go somewhere else. But you can be, you can speak your piece here without making a face, or just be polite, that's all. Okay? Now, there is a person I'd like to welcome up to speak first, because at the last meeting, we ran out of time. So, please, let's begin.
Hi, I'm Judy Blatchford, and I live on Smith Street in West Harwich, Massachusetts. And I purchased my house back in 92, and I remember when I was looking for a home, driving down 28 and coming through Dennisport, and then I hit West Harwich. And I saw the old church and the old homes, and I said, "This is a really nice quaint place. This is a place that I'd like to live." And I bought a house. And I've lived there happily ever since. And I've seen a lot of growth along, throughout the Cape, and it's been really distressing, because it's taken away the charm that brought me here. I grew up off Cape and, you know, gave up my career in Boston to have a life down here. And to see it going away with these corporate box stores coming in is really distressing. And I just want to say that I wish that you would consider referring this to the Cape Cod Commission. One, because we don't want to lose the charm of our town and what brings people to Harwich. Also, the traffic is outrageous in the summer. It is from the lights back past the weather deck, and it's hard to get out of my neighborhood. You know, I just, look at the crowd tonight, and I see that there's a lot of voices here which are trying to tell you, "Please listen to us. We don't want to give up the town that we love." Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep, thank you. Next, who'd like to speak next? Sir? Folks, doorway, please. Open up the doorway.
And you do need to go to the microphones if you're speaking.
Please open the doorway so we can get in or out.
My name is Carl Wood, and I live at thirty-two Route twenty-eight. And all summer long, I can't get out of my driveway. My, my feelings are, this should have been brought to our attention before you people spend all these months planning it. Another concern I have is, once they put this store in, I understand the church next door is, is going to be sold. What's going to go in there? We're going to get a really big building in there? I think we better try and keep the neighborhood as it is. The worst we can do is just take the building down and plant grass. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Mr. Chairman, can I? Just for the board's information, the application was filed on January eighth of two, of this year. The notice appeared in the Chronicle on January twenty-fourth and January thirty-first of this year, and a butters were notified by certified mail as of January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. So it, it was properly noticed and posted, and so it's, it's been out there a while.
Okay, thank you. Who'd like to speak next? Could you please go up to the-
The, the question was, who are butters?
Who are butters?
We discussed this at the previous two meetings, if you're directly next to the property or within three hundred feet of that property. That is determined by mass general law, that's what they call an assessor, and we receive a certified butters list from the assessor's office.
Right. Sir, please.
Hi, yes, Robert Hundredmark, thirty-six Pine Grove Road.
Your name again, I didn't do a sign.
Robert, that's okay, Robert Hundredmark, thirty-six Pine Grove Road, right around the corner from this place. It's, Pine Grove runs parallel to twenty-eight Depot. My understanding that, that the petitioner here is, is looking for two different special permits, and I, I hear a lot of talk about the hands, your hands being tied and, and you can't make architectural-
Let's be clear, our hands aren't tied. We're listening, that's all.
Well-
We can make a decision.
Sure, there's, well, in addition-
We've delayed it as much as you have.
In addition to a, a site plan special permit, they're also looking for a use special permit. I hear, I've heard people say that this use is allowed-
Charlene?
Okay.
Go ahead.
They do not need a use special permit. The use is allowable by the zoning.
But the fact that they're getting the twenty-
The twenty or more parking spaces is not considered a use special permit under our bylaw, the way it's written.
It's, it's a-
It's peculiar.
It's a special permit under, under section three twenty-five fifty-one, correct?
It is.
Right, which is the general special permit section of the bylaw. And, and the conditions of approval, in order to grant a special permit under three twenty-five fifty-one, the planning board, it says here, three twenty-five fifty-one A sub one, "Planning Board Shall Not Approve Any Application for a Special Permit Unless It Finds That, in its judgment, the following conditions are met." And A is, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. I think it's, it's a foregone conclusion that we're going to have an adverse effect by this use. There's, there's been enough factual information and, and the presence of all these people here can testify to that fact. So I think it, careful examination of three twenty-five fifty-one-
Falls into three twenty-five.
Sub A and all those conditions, no adverse effect, no nuisance, no serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians. If you go down through there, I don't think this board in good conscience can issue a special permit under three twenty-five fifty-one and make the required findings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. Next, who'd like to speak next? Anyone?
Just a clarification. The planning board has jurisdiction pursuant to three twenty-five oh-nine, which provides that any use presently listed in permitted use table shall be designated as a special permit use if the proposed, if the use proposes a structure, a structure is having gross floor area which they don't meet, or twenty or more new parking spaces, except for single family religious educational uses, shall be exempt. Some uses listed in tables allowed under P or special permit use require a special permit under the site plan provision of this bylaw. It's very confusing.
The, the legal notice, as published, specifically says that they require a special permit under three twenty-five fifty-one and a special permit under three twenty-five fifty-five. So I, I believe there's a use special permit here, not just a site plan review special permit. Site plan review special permit is, it's much easier for them to get through on that, but on the special permit required by section fifty-one, the board, I think, has, has not only much more discretion, but the board cannot grant the permit unless they specifically make a finding that the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. And I would suggest that this board cannot make such a finding.
Lou Urbano from West Harwich. Looking at this project, there's really one decision that can be, that has to be made. Does it enhance the community or does it detract? Does this development enhance what we have? We have two lawyers, I believe, that sit in front, and I believe the gentleman here said he met all the requirements. There's two lawyers outside that say, they're not really, they say you haven't. That's what lawyers do, they argue over facts. The reality is, you look at the community. You live here. You said that to start with.
Everybody does.
That's right. So we all want the best. So give us some reasons on how this project, this big box, is going to enhance Harwich as a whole? How it's going to enhance those historic homes that people have been trying to preserve for over five years? I have a foot that constantly reminds me of preserving historic structures, okay? The house sits next door, it's called the Alborough House. I'm the one that fell off the ladder. That's how much we love history, and I did it gladly. The reality is, there's some beautiful homes there. I hope you've driven by just recently.
I've walked by.
Right? People have spent a lot of money trying to bring that community up. Everybody talks about the Yellow House. Who's the owner of the Yellow House?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's beautiful. And we've been trying to get this community to move. We've been trying to get things to happen. This is a death nail. This says the community of West Harwich and that part of twenty-eight will now never be brought back to its beauty, its history of what it was. And if we lose that, we lose who we are, not for ourselves, but for everyone that comes next. That's the important part of what this whole discussion is about. We can look at the legalities, we can look at the charter, but it really boils down to emotion. Because most of you have already made your decision. You made a long time ago, six months ago. These people, yes, they were, they knew about it in January, but you've got a hundred and seventy people, I believe, that took a night out to say, is this going to enhance our community? Because if it's not, I can't go. Thank you.
Mr. Urbano, before you leave, right, I think you've done a really nice job making your point, right?
Thank you.
And I honestly am very proud of this group. I'm very proud of the board that we have here. I think we've been very patient, to be honest. I mean, you guys have been upset about things, so have we. We've had, you know, we're volunteers, right?
Yep.
You should see some of the emails we've gotten, right? They're less than kind, right? But let me tell you, in all of my years, forty-three, in heavy manufacturing, all around the world, right, this has been handled extremely well. We've had some folks, several weeks ago, weren't so polite, right? That's how they chose to behave. You own your behavior and you've done a great job. And I'm telling you that if we were, as a board, trying to be hasty, okay, what's the date today?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, right? And this started when?
Was that a test?
That's a test. And we started this in January. If we were in a hurry, right, if we were in a hurry, why would we be sitting here, right? Good job, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. This gentleman first, and then you can, sorry about that.
Steve Scannell, eight thirty-six, Route twenty-eight. I think we need a town meeting to do a couple of different things that would also handle this. And to do that, though, we'd need a good faith between the developer to say, hey, we don't mind relocating somewhere out by Route thirty-nine and one thirty-seven, there's good traffic out there, it's more appropriate out there. If it's going to hurt your feelings, we don't want to do it. That'd be wonderful. That's, I don't think that's a far stretch for fantasy, that businesses will help out a town, because obviously, the company has already offered twenty grand just because we love this building. That's money out of their own pocket, that's pretty good. But Harwich doesn't like to spend money. I know this to be true. When I was on Nantucket for twenty years, we had a vote for twenty-five million dollars to buy land, and we didn't discuss it. We all said, well, do you want to do it or not? And so it went to the town meeting without even a vote. We all voted for it, and that was that. And if you look back, it was money well spent. A lot of people don't like to spend the money, though. But I think you have a good guy that can crunch the numbers on the board of Selectman now, with Steve Ford, Selectman, and he could give us a good overview if we spent ten million, twenty million dollars on parking and/or historic upgrades, which might include a full HDC for the whole town, like Nantucket has. And then, you know, the townspeople could say, okay, well, if we're going to spend X amount of dollars and try to stop the wrecking ball, and we have an amenable company, that obviously they're amenable, they love this building, too, they offer to spend twenty thousand dollars out of their own pocket, that's pretty good. So I just think we need to pony up with some cash, because sending this, as everyone's got their little sign here, I think we were told last week by the planning board, but not too emphatically, that it's just not going to meet the criteria. This seven hundred, seven thousand five hundred square foot is way under the ten thousand criteria that they're going to want to look at. They're not even going to want to look at this. And I don't think the planning board has been really clear about that. I think there's a lot of rainbows being chased here about that. I don't think the Cape Cod Commission is interested in jumping in, helping Harwich here. Why should they? I wouldn't suggest that they do. I think Harwich should pony up and spend the money and do a full HDC and get a, an elected board like Nantucket, copy some other towns that would not allow a captain's house to be ripped out in this way. I just don't, I just don't think it's a good idea for Harwich. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I agree with him. I'm not a full-time resident, but-
What's your, what's your name, please?
I'm Amy Lord, and we live at fifteen Bells Neck Road, in the big white house with the barn, and we live right catty corner to this building. So my great-great-grandfather built our home, and he actually was one that started the Harwich part of Dar, Dar, Dry's Nickerson, helps develop the Harwich Center. So there is a history. I believe in the history. And I'm sad about a dollar store, I'm sad about that. But I do know that we need to do something as a community. And one day, I want to be here, full-time. My family was here, full-time. We live in Philadelphia, but it is amazing. I, I count the days till I can get here. So my Nikki Benson, Nikki for Nickerson, and she's a hundred, and she has such a passion for this area. She said, Amy, try your best to save this area and make it what it was once, a wonderful community. If it could be, my dream was, one day, to make that an area where we could have a community garden and have everybody come as a community, maybe have pickle courts. You know, bring this community together. Maybe I'm silly, but you know what? It's about a community.
Yep.
And that's what we're all about, and that's what we want. And I'm not so sure. We have Bennys, that's, was our favorite store, and it's not there anymore.
Yep.
How about that, for your dollar store?
Yep.
So I don't know.
All right.
I don't know that much about it, but-
Thank you very much. That's good. Yeah.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Gail McAllier, one oh-three, Route twenty-eight. I just wanted to address the, the comment that was made, I, as I understood it, that the, one of the reasons for just to refer this to the Cape Cod Commission was a regional impact. And it was suggested that they didn't think that this particular project had regional impact. They followed that up by some comment about, they've been suggested to go to Dennis. They said that in Eastham, the difference was that it did have regional impact because it was on a highway that impacted Orleans as well as Eastham. Well, this particular project is sited just practically on the Dennis-Harwich line. That, to me, is regional. The state of Massachusetts is in the process of already doing significant work on, on Dennisport. Amazing project that's planned there, that ultimately, when we walked through Harwichport and what's called, we call lovingly Captain's Row, they walked the entire length of it from the Dennis line to the Herring River with us. And, and we dreamed what it could be come with the state's assistance, and there is movement in that direction. And so, and, and a lot of the, the efforts will be focused on that intersection, trying to improve not only the beauty, but the functionality of the intersection around where Jablot and that shopping center is, and that, that entryway, that gateway, that, that is to West Harwich and also Dennisport as well. And so that's what, that's the area that we're talking about. That is regional. That is these two towns working together in harmony with the state of Massachusetts to beautify that entire corridor. Dennis, where they have lovely shopping and beautiful Cape Cod look to it and look and feel, and then you come from that into West Harwich, and you drive by all those historic captains' homes. Yes, there are stores that were pre-existing. They mentioned Domino Pizza, and well, if you look at us, what we want to do compared to them, there were things done, you know, over time, in a period of time, before people woke up to what they have. All of a sudden, they realized, as they started to see what they cherished was being bulldozed down. And eventually, especially, especially five years ago, it started to gain some momentum, and you've got people behind, behind the movement saying, save West Harwich. And people are coming out more and more. Every time there's something, more people come out, and more people come out as they realize, what's happening to our town? People don't seem to be listening to us. And so if it's a flat-out no from the planning board, if it's referring it to the Cape Cod Commission, because it does have a regional impact, whatever the course of action is, hopefully, the Cape Cod Commission has some ability to stop this project or to recognize the historical nature of the area and what this would do to it. I know people in Eastham who said that they put a moratorium on all building until the, the town could go back to the drawing board and revise the zoning laws so that it would prevent such a, a building from being built. If there's no teeth or no muscle in current building laws, perhaps we need to put some in there so that we don't just, you don't have to just wring your hands and say, I'm really sorry, but we can't do anything else. There's no legal mechanism to do- There's no legal mechanism to do anything. So let's stop the train. Let's stop. If we have to put a moratorium, let's put a moratorium. Whatever, however, that mechanism happens, let's do it so that saner thoughts can prevail, and we can save this beautiful town. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. McAllier.
Mary Alvis, 77th Smith Street, West Harwich. It's my understanding that two of the planning board's options involve the Cape Cod Commission, one for discretionary referral and the other for technical assistance. Am I correct?
Yes.
So here you have the Cape Cod Commission, this amazing resource with years and years of experience with issues like these. So my question is, what is the downside to referring it to the Cape Cod Commission?
I think I have an answer.
Thank you.
It's not the one you want to hear, but...
No, I'm just curious. Because all along, in the last six months, this is one that I've been thinking about. I can't see a downside. I can just see an amazing resource that would help you make an informed decision.
So, Mary, let's assume we go to the Cape Cod Commission, and they turn us down. Then what? What do we do?
But I don't think just because you might be turned down is a reason not to refer it.
It's not... It's all of us in this room, right? If we're turned down, we go to the Cape Cod Commission, and they say, you know, it doesn't meet the criteria. Then we come back, and then we make... We're going to have to make a decision, right?
I don't know if I'm speaking for all of us, but I think we're willing to take that chance, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anything else?
My name's Frank Giso. I live in Harwichport. Following up on the comments the woman just made about Cape Cod Commission, there are mandatory referrals. There are discretionary referrals. All the talk about how none of the thresholds are met means there doesn't need to be a mandatory referral. The reason there's a discretionary referral built into the legislation is so that projects that may have regional impact, that don't meet any of the mandatory requirements, could nevertheless get a looksee from the Cape Cod Commission. The answer to your question is, if you refer it, and they decide that it's not really a development of regional impact and give it back to you with no further advice, then you're exactly in the same spot you are today.
Right.
But I think, and I don't want to repeat what someone else has already said, I, for one, would feel a lot more comfortable if the resources at Cape Cod Commission made a judgment that there were no adverse traffic impacts. If the Cape Cod Commission made a decision that there was no adverse effect on community character, that the Cape Cod Commission made a decision that there's no adverse impact on historic preservation. It's not to demean or criticize anyone on the board. The purpose of the Cape Cod Commission was to add a resource into the arsenal of local boards so that they... They've got someone else to look at traffic reports. To put this in context, I've been a commercial real estate lawyer for 45 years. I've had lots of clients who have appeared in front of boards like this, until some of the towns in and around Boston started to require developers to hire... Pay the town to hire their own consultants. So the developer comes in with the traffic consultant. The developer had to pay the town to hire a traffic consultant that evaluated the developer's traffic report. The problem with most traffic reports, and I haven't followed this in the excruciating detail. I was away for a lot of the winter. I've been busy. I became aware of it a few weeks ago, is traffic reports are based on average daily trips. Average daily trips are 365 days a year. The fact that there's a peak for 10, 12, 14 weeks where the traffic in a particular road is 400 times what average daily trips is, that never gets factored in. Cape Cod Commission is able to wade through all that stuff. They were created because the entire Cape is so interconnected. And they said some things we're not going to allow local communities to have the final say. We are worried that if we let each individual community make their decisions, that we're going to end up with this patchwork that just doesn't melt, completely eradicates or erodes the fabric of the Cape. I don't see the downside to making a referral. As you say, if they say that referral was inappropriate, we don't think there's anything for us to look at, we're right back where we are tonight. But everyone in this room feels 100% better. I think that... You're public servants. You're all volunteers. I concede that. But you see the turnout in this room tonight. The fact that my only connection to this site is that I drive by it to get to my house. A dollar store at this location is going to have no impact on the noise, the traffic. It means that I'm going to see a different streetscape when I drive to my house. When my friends coming to visit me are going to see a different streetscape. When my family comes to visit, they're going to see a different streetscape. All of that is part of community character. That's one of the things that Cape Cod Commission will look at. That's it.
Yeah, thank you very much. This gentleman that's speaking has been waiting a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
He'll be heard. Yeah, go ahead.
Am I the one waiting?
Yeah, you're the one.
Terry Russell, Smith Street, Bell's Neck, West Harwich. I don't have any legal pages to cite. And the chair mentioned how controlled passion and what a nice reception that might be. But I refer... I've lived in town for 50 years, year-round. Same house, same wife.
Same wife.
I think.
It's all good.
There's an irony. I noticed the first action to get us moving was our former idea of a pet burial cemetery. There's something parallel with this evening's sense about what we can do as a community. That was a loud and clear signal at town meeting with 400 or 500 people sitting at our community gym. This is a little village. And this is my first opportunity, and yet my observation is echoed in the past seven or eight speakers. Coming in from Dennisport, there's a sign that says, "Welcome to Harwich." Anybody know the date?
1694.
Excellent. You're next speaking. Someone said, "Will this project enhance the village of West Harwich?" Emphatically, I say it will not. And shamefully, if this is the best we can do with respect towards... And again, an irony, the two representatives of the company, they're younger than my kids. So our town, and I recognize, has changed. And I recognize there's a mixed usage of Route 28. But a story, I too have volunteered. For the last 15 years, I was on the building committee and presently in the Mottamore Regional School Committee. And at the time, those of us who have been here recognized that for several years, we were losing 200, 300 children, first grade through 12, to Chatham for school choice. We had to do something about it. Now, it was a public response. Our response was to vote yes to a new Mottamore Regional High School as it developed. It turned out to be a jewel, because there are no longer any school-choice kids at that number leaving. My opinion, we enhanced that community, not just Oak Street, but the whole village, the whole town. We have a similar situation here, that if we were to look at that sign several times and say, "Welcome to Harwich," I don't think there's any enhancement for this type of product being sold mainly... And I'm not a shopper. But I think back in the day, when I was a little bit younger in West Harwich, and I live in a home that's maybe close to 280 years old. We put a lot of time and effort, my wife has. If I needed something from the dollar store, I might want to take a trip down to Hyannis. I'll take a walk down to Dennisport. And I find 1,000 years later, these gentlemen have an idea in West Harwich to put up a mini-me dollar store. And if that's the best we can do, then it's shameful that our bylaws have waited this long to make certain that a quality product needed from the towns wouldn't be built there. So I too would echo what speakers have said, that if the board, reflecting all of us living here year-round, would refer to the community commission, I see no harm at all in that. And again, sends a loud signal. I end with a little story. When we got the vote overwhelmingly, build the high school, we invited over 100 youngsters, K through 12, that were presently in Chatham and Harwich. And we invited them to bring soil from their homes. And on a given groundbreaking day, they came. And when that shovel was first thrown into the ground, what is presently now the high school, those kids marched around that circle of soil and dropped their home soil in, creating a community that said, "Homecoming." And that's only been five or six years ago. The same thing here. And I respectfully say, I'm sure dollar store would invite the neighbors to drop some soil in. We might drop something else in. But there's a signal as to what townsfolk we're talking about, not bylaws. But what are we going to do to say, "Welcome to Harwich"? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Cone, Pleasant Street. Mr. Chair and board members, I'm going to go down a slightly different path because what seems not to have been sufficiently discussed so far is the nature of the business being considered for this site. In large part, this is because La Cia di hasn't disclosed its client because of confidentiality issues, which is either a ruse or a convenient situation for them, helping them to avoid public scrutiny of its true aims. In fact, La Cia di is the largest developer of Dollar General stores in New England, and it's naive and dangerous to believe the dollar store is not intended for this site. Just look at the other clients listed on its website. Chick-fil-A, Best Buy, Dick's Sporting Goods, Target, Tractor Supply Company, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, TGI Fridays, Olive Garden, Five Guys, Kohl's. These are... I don't know. I'm not familiar with the Tractor Supply store, but all these others are stores which belong in big, high-traffic malls. None is remotely suited for West Harwich, not just aesthetically, but business-wise as well. Nor, for this reason, do they seem at all likely to be in La Cia di's plans. This only emphasizes what common sense should already tell us, that what is planned is a dollar store. So the question comes up, why would they want to hide this information? In part, presumably, it's because dollar stores aren't attractive and bring neighborhoods down. But also, quite probably, because it's well-known that dollar stores are destructive to local economies. Information about how dollar stores do this is widely available on the internet. One example is the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, ILSR, which has a sizable study which states, "Dollar stores are not merely a byproduct of economic distress. They're a cause of it, triggering the closure of grocery stores, eliminating jobs, and further eroding the prospects of the vulnerable communities they target." Dollar chains have thrived in part by taking advantage of lax land-use policies, such as we have here. A dollar store's arrival typically cuts sales at the supermarket by about 30%, and most cases, that's enough to put a local grocer out of business. I'm still quoting, "Dollar store jobs, not only fewer in number, but also low wage and low quality." An article in Forbes puts it, "Dollar stores are emerging as a silent killer of retail across the country. They are an invasive species, threatening local economies." Though Harwich is not economically distressed, per se, because of long off-season, its economy is fragile and its businesses are vulnerable. Meantime, a dollar store will not create new business in Harwich so much as siphon off business from existing retailers, potentially jeopardizing them. Imagine, for instance, an important community resource like Shaw's Market on Sisson Road going the way of Bennys. Dollar stores are net job subtractors. Their profits are not funneled back into the community. Rather, they're extracted from it. They debilitate local economies, and it's grossly unfair that such an outside mega-corporation should be allowed into our town for no other reason than to prey on it. The development of such a store is symptomatic of problems across the Cape with historic buildings and neighborhoods besieged by outside money pressures. And for this reason, this and other reasons, it is important that this project be referred to the Cape Cod Commission. Finally, the silver lining here may be the town's been alerted to shortcoming in zoning regulations. I'm not certain who's responsible for making zoning changes, so I leave that as an open question to the board. Hopefully, though, we can move ahead promptly to bring our zoning up to date in order to protect all the villages and neighborhoods in Harwich. As much as we need to preserve our historic buildings and neighborhoods, we also need to preserve our local economy. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Duncan Berry, 37th Route 28 in West Harwich. First, I'd like to thank everybody on the board. You've been the patients of Job. I mean, unbelievable, six months. Thank you, because you know what? We are being heard. I'm very appreciative. And this is a deliberative process, and you're doing your part. And we hear you, and I'm glad that you're hearing us. I just wanted to make a simple point tonight, and that's that as you drive through West Harwich on 28, or if you conveniently take a couple of minutes and walk over to the Historical Society, you can see it in all-in-one room, the entire Captain's Row documented in a special exhibit on the ground floor of the Brooks Academy. Every building, all 24 captains' homes and all that, laid out. And what you see, when you drive it, when you walk it, or when you look at the exhibit, you see that there's kind of an unfolding dialogue from generation to generation, from 1700s to the folks that fought in the Revolutionary War. There are two houses there that were built by a hero of the American Revolution. We've got houses that were built in a response to that, that wanted to detach from their parents, and then grandchildren who wanted to detach from their parents. And it's kind of an unfolding story of our town and our nation, people who interacted with presidents and, you know, huge corporate titans and global trade. It's great stuff. And all of that was done very deliberately, in a very conscious way. And it looks so natural, the way we look at it, and they didn't have planning boards. And so what I'd like to encourage you to do is to think of this as a gap in our laws that don't allow you to do the proper planning that we want. Because we're here for planning. And what I think what we're trying to do with the commission is to help get a stopgap so we can get our ducks in a row so that developers can come in. And it's not so that we're going to try and hold on to one building and, you know, have this rallying cry for one building. It's what comes next. We already have the past. What comes next? And we think that... I mean, I think a lot of us think we would like to make sure that the next step is in line with the kind of setbacks and the qualities and the kind of intentions that we've seen. And we have like 250 years of, let's continue that. And we just don't think this is part of that. That's all.
So Dr. Berry, here's a question. You know, I'm glad we're having kind of a discussion here. What is the plan? I mean, what do you want?
I think what we would like is the same kind of zoning protections that you have in Harwichport and in Harwichport. Very simple. Nothing unique. But, you know, we might have to tweak it a little bit here or there for what we have. We're not asking for a historic district. We're not trying to get something rammed down that we can control people. No, this is actually kind of straightforward. The zoning that actually should have... The first problem came up, remember? I don't know if you guys were around, when they put in... It was a Friendly's. Now it's Fiera. Back in... I was the first busboy there, if anybody has any... Excuse me, dishwasher. I was behind that. And then they wanted to put up a Wendy's, right where the old Sunoco station was, and there was a fight against... We'd never... Our parents didn't fight this battle. We need to do the battle, get the zoning right, welcome the developers in to play by the right rules. That's all. And we need you to help us get the planning right. That's the planning part of the planning.
Yeah, that's... The planning, believe it or not, is something... Having a plan for the town, I think, is really a critical point. And that's something that, you know, in all of... Again, in my experience, which isn't in public... It's all been in heavy manufacturing, but you always had a plan. We couldn't go to the board and say, we're going to build a plant here and just put it up and hope it made money. But there's a lot of work that goes into that. And it was the old saying, you plan your work, and you work your plan, and you make it happen, right? So, I mean, I think we, as a community, and I think our selectmen have heard the message that we should have a plan here in place. I mean, otherwise, you're going to be building this, that, and the other thing without...
Without attention.
Yeah, without attention and without a good return for the community, right? So, I mean, I think it's a good point, and I appreciate you. So, I, I mean, I think it's a good point, and, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Next.
Good evening, Karen Horn, 34 Smith Street, West Howard. I just want to, I have a couple of things, but in response to the comment about when you said they might not accept the project, they might turn us down, my, my comment, my question is, imagine if the explorers said, we might not make it, we might not get there. Imagine if the scientists said, we might not figure it out, or we might not be able to come up with that medicine for that treatment. Imagine if the doctor said, I don't think we're gonna be able to figure it out. That's how progress is made, and so to, to say that the, the reason would be to not refer it is they might turn us down, you're stopping before you even get going, and so I, I say we take the chance, they just might accept it. Imagine if they did, imagine how much that could help our town if they did, and then they had input for, for you and for all of us. I wanted to also point out to, to everybody here, this is not just about Dollar General. Okay, this is a much bigger picture than that. No matter what would go in that building, someday, one year, two years, 10 years, that, that retail outlet might leave. Now we have an empty building, yet another, or we have another, another store, we don't know what it would be, so it's not just about that, it is about the bigger picture. And we really, as others have said, we need to think about what our town stands for, what we want going forward, and as you have mentioned, you are a volunteer, and I do thank you for that, I know you put in a lot of hours, I put in a few just coming to meetings, and it's a lot, just to come to the meetings.
Okay, I'm retired, I can do it.
But I, I just would like to remind everyone that Deerfield listened to their constituency, they took a chance that Cape Cod Commission would accept the project, and they referred it to the Cape Cod Commission. Eastham listened to their constituency, took a chance, referred it to the Cape Cod Commission, Cape Cod Commission accepted the project. I'm asking Howard to listen to the constituency here, to take a chance that they might accept the project, and to refer it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Who's next? Come on, don't be shy now, come on.
Good evenings, out there, Ben, oh, West Howard. I know, we've been spending a lot of time together.
Yeah, it's all right.
And I noticed tonight, my husband and I have switched roles, he's the one that's talking about feelings, and I'm the one that's bringing the facts to you, so. I did just wanna say one thing about the Cape Cod Commission, and I understand your concern, and I have no guarantees either, but I will tell you, in terms of facts, we have put in some work, and they are aware of what's going on. We did speak with Sarah Kordjoff about this, and also we got some, we had some, one of our members of the group talked with John Ideman, and we got some information, and our sense is that it, it might qualify, so.
Sorry about that.
Sorry.
Technical problem.
Turn your volume down, turn your volume down.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
It's okay, it's all right. Please, Susan.
Okay, you owe me.
Go ahead, Susan, please.
I think that was it, other than to thank you and repeat, we do appreciate your patience, I do appreciate the turnout. Yay, Howard, it's just amazing, and if you have your sign, or you have your arm, now would be the time to raise them, because I know you've been holding them on. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I, I think what you're saying is, Howard, we have a problem.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Just, Mr. Chairman, I, I did hand out to each of you the newest DRI referral form this evening. It had been included in your electronic packets as well.
Yep.
So you do have the form. On the backside, it does discuss for any discretionary referral.
Yep.
And then it provides with what I, the list that I have up on the screen, so you do have that form.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please, Mary.
Mr. Chairman, Charlene, you mentioned a technical referral versus a DRI, can you explain to us the difference?
A technical referral, it's just simply similar to sending it to the departments within the town for their review. You can send it to the Cape Cod Commission to be reviewed for traffic, for whatever you would like. That is actually how Eastham did it originally, they sent it as a technical referral, to get technical review by the commission staff, and from there, it went into a full, not a full DRI referral, but a limited discretionary referral based on comments from the staff at the Cape Cod Commission.
So the technical referral came back to the board, and then the board followed up with a...
It was actually the Board of Selectmen that did the referral there, not the planning board.
So the technical, Board of Selectmen sent it for technical review, technical review came back to the Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
Board of Selectmen then made the findings for DRI?
Yes.
And sent it back to the Cape Cod?
As a limited DRI, yes.
So, so Charlene?
Yes, sir.
Mary, are you finished?
I'm done, thank you.
So, Charlene, if, I mean, what, we're perfectly capable, though, of making that recommendation, right? And that's an option.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, under the Cape Cod Commission, I believe the only staff person in a community that can do a referral is the building commissioner.
Right.
So if they get an application in for a building permit, that, you know, big, whatever, they have the ability to refer that as a limited, as a, either as a mandatory, if it triggers mandatory, or do it as a limited discretionary referral. The planning board and the Board of Selectmen have the authority to send a project as a limited DRI if it doesn't meet the mandatory. If it comes, if an application comes to this, to the planning board as a mandatory, I, as the planner, am authorized as your agent to send it immediately, before there's even a public hearing. Nothing happens at the local level, it automatically gets sent. I don't have that authority as a limited discretionary referral, but the planning board does, and the Board of Selectmen always has that authority, regardless of who the project is before. If there's something before conservation that they feel they need assistance with, or it's a project that, you know, they feel is a regional impact, they can do it as a limited discretionary referral. So they're, you know, depending upon the project and what boards it's before, they have that opportunity.
So what, what do we have, I mean, what are our options this evening? We've got, go ahead, Mary.
Can I just, a follow-up to his, to Mr. Joyce's question on what are our options?
Yes.
It would also be helpful to know what our, what the vote requirement would be to pass any of those options.
Yeah.
I would be happy to do that. For, let me go to my list. For option one, and these are in no particular order, it's just the way they got typed. If you decide to vote, if this board decides to vote on this application, the, the motion does have to be in the positive, based on the zoning bylaw, it would require a 5-0 vote to be passed. If it was four voting in favor and one opposed, it would not be approved. If it was one voting to abstain, it would not be approved. You need five members voting in the affirmative. To allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice, if that was still on the table, which, I mean, it's always on the table, that is just a three to two vote. To refer it to the Cape Cod Commission is just a simple majority. So if it's a three to two vote to send it to the Cape Cod Commission, of the five members eligible to vote on this, Mr. Stoltz is not, Alan's not here, he, he would not have been eligible to vote. So it's just a simple majority to send it to the Cape Cod Commission.
Simple majority of members present and voting?
Simple majority of members, it would be, in my opinion, simple of members voting, yes.
Okay.
So it would need to be three to two. I do not believe it would be a simple majority of the full board that...
Which would be four.
Which would be four.
Yeah.
I do believe strongly that it would be just a, of those members able to vote would require majority vote, simple majority, not super.
Thank you, Charlene.
You're welcome.
Yep. Any more comments?
Hi, Bob Nickerson, sorry, Bob Nickerson, 37 Baby Road, and just finished our 1796 two-year project at 617 Main Street, so we're trying to give back to. So I'm just gonna read one statement here, just short and sweet. This is from the Cape Cod Commission website. Mission, the Cape Cod Commission's mission is, bold, keep a special place special.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? To protect the unique values and quality of life on Cape Cod by coordinating a balanced relationship between environmental protection and economic progress. I'm not gonna read the rest of the website stuff.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Also reading from the Cape Cod Commission Act, Section 2, Subsection H states, "Development of Regional Impact," this is a list of description of terms used by the Cape Cod Commission. Development of regional impact, or quotes, "A development which, because of its magnitude, or the magnitude of its impact on the natural or built environment, is likely to present development issues significant to or affecting more than one municipality, and which conforms to the criteria established in the applicable standards and criteria for developments of regional impact pursuant to Section 12." It's my belief in reading this description, and based on the information we received from John Ideman?
Ideman.
Who is the chief regulator for Cape Cod Commission, and some of the comments that have been made regarding the urging of the planning board to refer it to Cape Cod Commission, I, I don't, based on those things, I don't think that it meets the, the criteria to do that. It seems to me, and I've heard a number of people say these, and I'm gonna paraphrase, and also have seen it written, can't you please refer it to Cape Cod Commission to buy us some time to change the zoning? And I personally don't feel that that was the purpose for the establishment of the Cape Cod Commission. I can attest to that, it was way before my time, but it doesn't seem like that it would be the, the thrust of what the Cape Cod Commission is intended to do. So I, I don't feel it's appropriate, based on what I've heard so far, and what I've read, and what I understand, that there is a need to refer to the Cape Cod Commission.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe?
I just support what my brother said.
Yeah, okay.
This may have been discussed already, I missed it, but if it were to be for, referred to the Cape Cod Commission, and the Commission accepts it, what is the, is there, and if so, what is the downside? Do we lose control of the project, that we have to go, we have to accept the direction that the Cape Cod Commission sets based on its review, or what is, what is the result in the event they do accept it?
Through you, Mr. Chairman? If the Cape Cod Commission does accept it, they will hold their public hearings, do their review, assuming that they approve it, we'll just go on the assumption they approve it, with conditions, this board would have to abide by those conditions. You can impose additional conditions, but you can't require anything less than what the Cape Cod Commission would have imposed in their decision.
Thank you.
And quite often, when there are limited discretionary referrals, oftentimes, the applicant withdraws. Not that I'm saying that the applicant would withdraw here, I don't know, you know, we have not had that conversation, 'cause it would not be appropriate for me to have that conversation. But, you know, in, in talking with John Ideman, he says that is usually what happens.
Yep. Yeah, Bill?
I can't vote, but is there any way we could send that to the Commission under the cultural heritage?
Can you speak up? Nobody can hear you, Bill, sorry, I can't even hear you, and you're...
I can't vote, but is there any way we can send this to the Commission under the cultural heritage?
If I might...
Right here, so, speak louder.
These, just for clarification, Mr. Chair, these are for the people at home, the only microphone that provides...
No, these work.
Yeah, they, they...
For amplification, yeah, they do, they do. They're just not, you know...
Try it again, Bill. I can't vote, I understand that, but is there a way that we can send this to the Commission under the cultural heritage?
Yeah.
If I might, all those options are available to you, natural system, built system, community system. Honestly, I don't think natural system, I, I don't believe as your town planner that anything would qualify under natural system. Under built system, community design, I, I'm not sold on the traffic thing, traffic on Route 28 is not great in the summer, nothing is gonna change that. And then as far as community system, you know, perhaps cultural heritage.
Yeah, I, you know, Bill, to your point, I think there's a, first of all, I, I'd like everybody to know and understand, I really don't feel like this is giving up any authority or power that we have, honestly. If we referred it to a Commission, I mean, the best people that I worked with were those who took the initiative to do the right thing and do it the right way, right? So, and, and they were great, and I love to have them, either helping me or as a part of my team. I don't think we're gonna lose a darn thing if we would refer to the Commission. I think what we'll do is we'll buy some... Please, I don't, I don't, I don't want any applause, I, I agree with, I agree with Bill. I, I think it's one of those things that, you know, why not? I mean, we don't have anything to lose here, right? And it doesn't mean I'm trying to convince anybody else on the board, but I do think we could take a timeout, look at it, get another set of eyes and some more opinions on it. It's just my opinion, that's all. Mary?
I have a question on the, the requirements for, do we know what the, what we would need to make for findings for technical versus regional?
I, I don't know.
I too am having a little bit of trouble trying to make the case, because what, what I, I think I'd like people in the room to understand, each one of us takes our vote very seriously, so none of us are going to vote something that we don't truly believe, and if we don't believe that it's of, of regional impact, it's very hard to put your name on a document that says it's, you know, we believe it's regional impact.
Yep.
I don't know that I'm personally ready to, to get there, regional-wise, I'm wondering about the technical...
Technical review.
Well, technical, you can send it for any of the entities under technical review, and say, we need help with this, can you look at that? So, you know, I don't think there's any finding of facts involved in that. For the limited discretionary referral, or any discretionary referral, a referring agency should provide support about why it believes a project that does not otherwise meet or exceed a review threshold has regional impact, and thus should require DRI review. A municipal agency making a discretionary referral may request DRI review for one or more or all of the issue areas of the RPP under which the agency maintains that the project will have regional impact. A limited discretionary referral is one that, sorry, is one that requests review under one or more, but fewer than all the RPP issue areas. If a limited discretionary referral is accepted, the Commission will limit its RPP consistently, consistency review only to those specified by the referring agency. I don't believe that this triggers all of them, for a variety of reasons. If it triggers some of them, that's not for me to, to say or decide, but you would need to state, you know, why it believes a project has regional impact, and thus should require development of regional impact review. That needs to be part of the application that gets sent to the Cape Cod Commission.
Yep.
And what's our timeframe on, on preparing that application? Those are findings that we would need to make the, on the date that we make the vote, correct?
I would think so, because you need to, you know, have that called out, you know, the referring entity would be the chair, I would be the staff person, so I would be the direct contact, but it needs to come from this board as the referring agency. But it needs to come from this board as the referring agency, assuming the board wants to do that, as to why this triggers a, in, in your opinions, belief, what, what makes it regional.
Yeah.
I have one further question. If we're, if the board makes a decision to refer it, for either, either/or, they're dealing with the development, correct, and not dealing with the, with the captain's house that is under the demo delay?
The only thing that would happen with the captain's house that's on the demo delay is if the Cape Cod Commission accepts it as a limited DRI referral, any local permitting stops. So, if, um, you know, this goes beyond the September date that the, the demolition delay was imposed, um, if they came in the day after to, um, request a demo permit from the building commissioner, the building commissioner could not issue that if it was still before the Cape Cod Commission.
So, it essentially tolls the
It tolls, yes, exactly.
So
Thanks, Sharon.
Please, great. If this were referred to the Commission and the applicants did not withdraw
Mm-hmm.
And continued under the timeframe that John explained
Mm-hmm.
When he was here, I think up to seven months. And let's just say hypothetically, the Commission comes back and says, "No, you can't have green and white onings, you need to have orange and, and yellow onings."
Mm-hmm.
And in that seven-month period, the zoning changes, district, whatever might come of all the work that this is hopefully going to, and, and result in, is implemented. Are the applicants still working under the current zoning bylaws that are in force now under which they applied? Or do the new, assuming it's approved and there's a district and the zoning things change, do they then have to come and reapply under those new zoning regulations?
I don't know.[741.56][741.56](LAUGHING). I'll be really honest, I don't know. I'm, I'm of the opinion that it would be similar to local regulations would halt, so that they freeze. So, whether there'd be considered a zoning freeze
Right.
For the purposes of this application, I, I don't know.
So
Would it be considered grandfathered?
Or would, yeah.
Well, that, that was, I'm asking the question 'cause I don't know, but I was trying to think it through previously, and I would think that it would be grandfathered, just because that would make sense to me.
Yeah. I, I'm kind of thinking that it would be, because in good, you know, the board referred it, it's before the Cape Cod Commission
Right.
It's being reviewed.
The applicant shouldn't be penalized
Right.
For essentially what would become a change in the rules
Right.
In the middle of the game.
Exactly. And zoning also doesn't happen that fast to change, so
Right, yeah, I mean
And then, can, can we address that? Would zoning, whatever comes up, would that have to go to an annual town meeting?
Absol, well, any town meeting. Zoning, zoning amendments can be proposed by petition
Yep.
By the planning board, by the zoning board of appeals, by the Board of Selectmen. There's a process by which, when a zoning amendment is proposed, whether it's, you know, by one of those entities, it goes to the, the selectman. The selectmen refer it to the planning board
Mm-hmm.
Who starts the, um, the, the statute process under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, starts the public hearing process, it's advertised, the board holds public hearings, no one ever attends to public hearings, so if there is ever a zoning change in West Harwich, I want as many people here today as there would be for that zoning amendment, and if we need to, we'll go to a larger venue.
Let's say.
Um, that is the process. The, the planning board is required to make a recommendation on a zoning article to the town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, then it goes to the vote at town meeting.
Yeah.
So ultimately
And it, oh, one thing, if the planning board's recommendation is not to recommend a zoning change, which has happened in the past, I doubt anything like that would happen here, but, um, you know, on some petition zoning articles, boards have said, "We, we can't support this." If it does not pass at town meeting, it cannot come back for two years.
So, if that were to be the case, and there were no special annual, special town meeting called
Mm-hmm.
Before the regular, we scheduled one in May or whatever, in springtime
Right.
Then, the current zoning bylaws remain in
Yes.
Enforce and followed.
Yes.
And other applications could come in.
Yes.
So, as I stated before, from the numerous things I heard, that the people are, not everyone, but there is a thrust to refer to Cape Cod Commission to buy us time to change zoning laws
That won't happen.
For this particular application, however, as we just
I, I think that would be very difficult, because it's just the timeline involved.
Exactly. So, that's kind of what I felt, and I wanted
Mm-hmm.
The group to hear that.
Yeah, no, Craig, I think, look, you make a really good point. I, I think it's important for everybody to hear that. I mean, zoning takes, I mean, it takes a lot of time, right? And, I mean, we've been talking about this issue for just six months.
Right.
We could go on, so. David?
Thank you.
During the comment period, a gentleman raised the issue of three twenty-five fifty-one, use special permit?
I, I actually think that was overzealousness on the preparer of the legal notice. That does not apply to this application. It's three fifty-one, excuse me, three twenty-five nine
Oh, nine, yeah.
And three twenty-five fifty-five.
Yep.
So, fifty-one, I do, I do not believe pertains to this application.
Yeah, it's really important that we're all on the same page on that.
Yes, yep.
Yep, yep. So, any more comments from the, from the board, or do we have any recommendations? Anything new?
Yes, actually. Robert Alvis, Smith Street, West Harwich. I'll be brief, I hadn't meant to speak tonight. But, there's something that's been articulated a couple times at the front of the room about the, the regional impact, and that this, this project does not qualify. In a conversation I had with Jonathan Ideman this week, he said, "Under the rubric of community design, the fact that this large retail space would be going up so close to Main Street, Dennisport, which has undergone a renaissance in the last ten years, uh, ten years ago." So, he said that sort of thing would, would be something the Cape Cod Commission would definitely take note of, right, across the town line. And he also said that, apart from all these criteria, there's another criterion that the Cape Cod Commission pays attention to, and it's more of an umbrella criterion, and that is, would the project represent a greater benefit than a detriment to the community?
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's something we've heard people up here say, time and again, it's something the Cape Cod Commission thinks about, too.
No, I, thank you, Robert, good point.[1104.51][1104.51](APPLAUSE). So, what, what I, what I, to, to your point, Mr. Alvis, there are three things that I think are really important here, and this is, again, I'm, I'm repeating, I'm a member of the board now, not the Chair, right? I think community design is really important, regardless of whether it's East Harwich or, or West Harwich, or Harwich Port, it makes little difference. Second is cultural heritage. I mean, while I am leaving, I'm not leaving because I don't like it, I, I, I think the next is, is transportation, right? So, we're all concerned about transportation. We've got four months, where transportation around here, whether it's personal or public, is hell. Right? That's the, that's kind of the price of admission here on Cape Cod, but especially in Harwich at the elbow. So, anyway, that's how I look at this.
Sure. Just a, a couple of quick items to, to run through
Sure.
All the, all the butters' comments. Regarding the technical review with the Cape Cod Commission, there's been obviously an extensive technical review with the town, the engineering department's review is still moderate. We've had traffic review with the police department and with Mass DOT. There's been utilities reviews, review. As far as community character, we've been, tried to meet every condition of, of the board. We've provided interior landscaping, landscaping around the parking lot, per, per the code requirements, which there are code requirements. For architecture, I know, certainly a noted, we didn't have to meet that. We brought several different architectural elements in for the, for the board's consideration, and we'd be happy to, to select the one that the, the board preferred. And then, lastly, just the reason not to defer it to the Cape Cod Commission, I guess it's in our opinion, it's not appropriate. Certainly, there's no downside from the community standpoint, relative to the project, but it's not a regional impact, in our opinion, it's below the thresholds. It doesn't impact areas outside of, of, of West Harwich for traffic.
Thank you, Matt.
My name is Jennifer Chase, and I'm in a butter. I always had visions of looking out my bedroom window and seeing the ocean, but I guess it'll be the Dollar General.[1243.01][1243.01](LAUGHING). And as far as traffic, it is extremely difficult to get off Belmont and Cross, Route twenty-eight. Most of the time, I have to take a right, and then go through the church parking lot to get over to Depot West. And I can't tell you how many times I've had to call nine-one-one.
What's this like?
It is extremely dangerous intersection. I've had to call my daughter, who's an RN, "Emily, you need to get out here," and it's, it's very much a concern. And I would say regional as well. Dennis is right there on, we're on, we're budding Dennisport. So, I'm a twelfth-generation Cape Codder, and I'd love the village, and I'd like to see the integrity stay. That's why all of us are here on Cape Cod, because of the beauty of Cape Cod. So, we can have a balance of business and beauty. Thank you.[1303.51][1303.51](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Chairman, if you close the public hearing, I'll call a question, but we have to close the public hearing first, don't we?
No, if you close the public hearing, you're ending everything, including a referral to the Cape Cod Commission, if that's something on the table.
We can't do it after we close the public hearing?
No, because
We have to discuss finding, we have to
Well, if you get, to refer it to the Cape Cod Commission, you have to leave the public hearing open, because it would eventually come back to this board.
Okay, leave the public hearing open.
Yep.
It's simple enough.
Let's, let's leave it open, and do I hear a motion?
Move to refer the matter to the Cape Cod Commission?
In what respect? I'll second, so that we can discuss.
Yep. And, and there's a second?
There's a second.
To discuss?
For the purpose of discussing.
Okay. So, let's have that discussion.
So, um, does the board want, feel that we can come up with findings tonight to do, to do a limited review, and for what, for what subjects, and for what, with what findings?
Do we have to make findings if we're gonna refer?
Yes.
You don't have to make findings, you just need to say why you believe a project has regional impacts. You don't need to make any findings.
And, but we also have to decide for which topics we're referring, correct?
You do.
Yep.
And you can do it for numbered
So
Yes.
I mean, for me, I do think cultural heritage is, and I'm just throwing it out there for the board
Yep.
I do think cultural, cultural heritage is something that we could request because of the push with Captain's Row, it is on a parcel where there is a captain's house, the HDHC did vote to, took the extent of, of its authority to put in a twelve-month demo delay. Um, you know, the transportation, with the sense that it is, um, regional to Dennisport, Main Street, I'm not, you know, I guess I'd be, I'd be willing to, to say that perhaps its proximity to Dennisport has some regional impact. I'm not sure if that's enough for the Commission, but I'm sure the Commission can make their own decision.
David?
Yeah, I'm speaking in favor of the motion. I think the possible candidate, our community design, cultural heritage, heritage in the economy, possible impact on property values for the matter.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have to agree with him that the cultural heritage and the community design is the two things that concern me the most.
Yeah. I mean, we've got, it, it's, it's been pretty clear, what we've all heard is, is community design, cultural heritage, a transportation, and I think the economy is, is a good point, too.
Can I read what the goal is on economy?
There are three. Yep.
This is right from the regional policy plan, "Economy to promote a sustainable regional economic, um, eh, regional economy comprised of a broad range of businesses providing employment opportunities to diverse workforces."
Mm-hmm.
So, it doesn't get into
Worth a try.
Um, yeah. I, I, I think that one might be a stretch.
I had not read that.
Yeah.
Agree.
And just so for, I may as well, "Cultural heritage, the goal to protect and preserve the significant cultural, historic, and archaeological values and resources of the Cape." And, bear with me, "Transportation, to provide and promote a safe, reliable, and multimodal transportation system." And, "Community design," was that the other one? "To promote and enhance the unique character of the region's built and natural environment based on local context."
If
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Please.
I would say with, uh, cultural heritage, certainly, I do think the Captain's Row area is probably unique to our section of Cape Cod in, with the number of, the number in proximity of, of captain's houses within, what, a half-mile area, for both historical value and also some value towards tourism. I do think, Mr. Berry does have a flyer that he presented to, um, HDHC this week, that, I don't know if we include submissions with our application, but I do think it does lay out the, the number of buildings and their locations, which may be helpful
Yeah.
In that respect.
I mean, the, what I would, what I would say about cultural heritage, I, I don't know if any of you have ever had the chance to just walk up the steps of the Baptist Church there, and I'm not Baptist.[1641.71][1641.71](LAUGHING). But, on that, on those steps, on either side, if you can read those two, um, memorial markers that are there from the First World War, I think you'd be pretty impressed, right? So, that, to me, is a part of the culture and heritage, and you walk around that cemetery, which, Dr. Berry, I did, I can tell you that it is, it's, it's pretty important, right? And that's one of the reasons I said it's, uh, "Community design, cultural heritage, and transportation." I think those are, those are three. And, and again, that's my opinion.
So, Joe, you wanna make your motion?
Well, we
I made my motion, and I, and I think Mary amended it.
Well, you, you need to call it out a little bit more, if I might.
So, I'm, I'm wondering if we can perhaps take a five-minute recess to try and draft something for findings that would be appropriate?
If I, if I
Yeah, or read it back.
So far for, so far for cultural heritage, I have, um, the Captain's Row, and certainly the handout, and I've, I've seen the handout regarding the Captain's Row that Duncan had done.
Which, which I think if we, if we state is certainly unique
Mm-hmm.
Not just to Harwich, but to
This, this area of the Cape.
Um, I have captain's houses within a half-mile of this area, which would also go into Harwich Port, or Dennisport. And I also wrote "The vicinity of the historic Baptist Church and Cemetery."
Okay.
Um, I, that wasn't mentioned by them, so I'm not listening, sorry. And then, you also have, um, "Community design, which speaks to, to protect and enhance the unique character of the region's built and natural environment based on local context."
Yes.
So, I think that, that's also a new development within, within an area with such, um, unique cultural buildings. I kind of think the two go hand in hand, myself.
They kind of do.
You're suggesting that, that our motion should tell the Cape Cod Commission
We need to tell the Cape Cod Commission why
Why
We think it's regional, it's of regional impact.
Yeah.
Because that's part of the requirement for the Because that's part of the requirement for the discretion on, the discretionary review.
Limited discretionary review, referral. These three topics with some subtopics below them to, to substantiate the referral.
But if we can't, if we can't substantiate, we have to give them reasons why we think it's of regional impact, and if we can't, according to Mr. Idman, when he was here...
Right.
What he said was that if we couldn't substantiate regional impact, then they would not accept it.
So, it's, if I, if I might, under community design, I read the goal, the objectives are to promote context-sensitive building and site design, minimize the amount of newly disturbed land and impervious surfaces, and avoid adverse visual impacts from infrastructure to scenic resources. Those are the objectives.
And, and you believe that those should be in the motion?
No, sir. What I'm doing is I'm reading from the regional policy plan what the objectives are...
Okay.
For the community design. I'm just giving you fact information, I'm not leaning you one way or the other.
I know that.
Are we providing these as, typically as findings of fact, a motion for findings of fact, and then a vote to refer, or is it...
I don't think it is a findings of fact, I think it's your belief, your feeling about it. To me, feelings and beliefs aren't really findings of fact.
Gotcha.
Does this have to be done tonight, or can it be, can we give some more thought to this during the next few days before it's submitted to the Cape Cod Commission?
You can...
A lot more comfortable with that.
You, you can do that with the understanding that at the next meeting, that it's going to be strictly for the discussion of the board to talk about how to refer it?
Nothing further.
Yeah. You're not closing the public hearing, but I think you need, do need to limit it. I am gone next week, so, you know, I can put something very quick together based on what I've heard in conversation this evening, and send it out to you, but you, you all are going to have to really think about what you want to include in that. So you've already, there's a motion and second to send it to the commission.
Right.
You haven't technically voted on that, you can hold your vote until the next meeting.
Okay.
Can we check and see when people are available for the next meeting, because we need to make sure we have the...
The next meeting is July 9?
July 9, yep.
That's your next regularly scheduled meeting?
I'll be here.
I'll be at your meeting, I just won't be around next week.
Yeah.
So your packets are actually going to get done Thursday, because I'm headed to a wedding on Friday, so...
Okay.
I'd like to get a copy of the document you're reading from.
It's in your packet.
I look for it, I can see it.
It's...
So then, we're, we will, we will, we have a motion on the table.
So we have to, we have to, we have to withdraw the motion on the table to continue the public hearing to another time and date certain, because we can't close the public hearing, we can't, we have to, it's still a public hearing, it's open.
It's still an open public hearing?
And I think we have to have a motion to continue to, to a date and time certain. So I think, I think the motion, if we're not, if the board isn't prepared to vote tonight, then I think we have to...
Have me withdraw my motion.
Before you do, I'm discussing.
I understand.
I, I think, because we have to postpone the, we have to continue the public hearing, regardless, whether we, whether we...
Yeah.
If we don't take a final vote tonight, I think we, we have to continue the public hearing regardless.
Absolutely. But do, do you need to actually vote on the motion in the second before you, or can you table that vote until the continuation of the next public hearing, which would be July 9?
Well, I think we have to, we have to vote to table it, and then take a motion to continue.
Yes.
And then, we're going to have to take the motion off the table at the next meeting in order to be able to vote for it.
Mary, can you explain the reason for delaying the...
Oh, I, I see where you're going.
Do you know what I'm saying? Because then it's on the table, then it's on the table, and typically you don't vote when it comes out.
Right, so you, you want the motion and second to be exactly what you're referring it to the commission for?
I think so.
To keep it cleaner.
I think so.
Okay. Now, I, I understand what you're doing.
Okay.
Answer your, answer your question. I want to make sure the motion's right.
Yeah.
So, then if...
That's, that's why I, I don't want to do it off the top of my head.
Right, then...
If, if the motion requires the, the detailed reasons in each of these categories that we're referring to, then it has to be delayed. We're not prepared on any...
Right, so, then I, I would suggest, if you would, withdraw your motion and second, the mo, the new motion would be to continue it to the next meeting for the purposes of the board discussing its...
Recommendation.
Its referral to the Cape Cod Commission.
I withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Oops.
You can still have a discretion.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I don't understand why we cannot vote on a motion to refer it, up or down, and then do whatever work needs to be done to identify it, to complete the submission. All you're doing, all you're doing is voting, all you're doing is voting, yes, we're going to refer it. Yeah. Next week, or next two weeks, we're going to figure out how, and we're going to spell it out, or do whatever.
I have a hard...
Assuming, assuming that it passes.
All due respect.
The other, on the, on the downside, you do all this work for the next two weeks, and you're not going to be around, so there's going to be a crunch, and then we come back in two weeks, and we vote not to refer it. Why did somebody do all that work in the past two weeks?
All due respect, I don't think, I don't think you have a vote without, your, your vote, your vote to refer it is meaningless if you don't have the reasons why you're voting to refer it.
Why?
I, I think it's meaningless, and I think, and I think it could be challenged. And that's my own personal opinion.
I, I have to share the concern raised by, by Mary.
I think...
Because it's no different than making any other decision that we make. We come up with our findings, and we, we make our decision, and our decision date is our decision date. And, and I'm uncomfortable taking a vote unless we're, unless we're putting it on the table, and I, I understand, I understand they'll want to do it tonight and finalize it. I also understand the hesitation from my board members, my, my colleagues here, if we're uncomfortable flying by the seat of our pants, which frankly, I think we are, because I think, oh, I think maybe tonight a lot, some people changed their minds.
Yeah.
And, and, and I would rather do it right than get it right, even if it means waiting two weeks, than taking a vote and then saying we're going to amend it later on, because then you're amending a vote, and you're going to have to vote to reconsider the, I, I don't think it works. I, I don't think procedurally it works.
The only thing that I, that I would say in response to that, Mary, and I understand what you're saying, and I follow it, but realistically speaking, if someone tonight is in favor of referring it to the Cape Cod Commission, are they going to change and decide not to because of the wording that is put into the document to refer it to the Cape Cod Commission?
They could.
They could.
I mean, if you want to refer it...
They could, but there's, but...
But the same argument could be made, if I can, that...
If we can't come up with the wording, then we might, we might not decide.
And, and...
I mean...
But it's not...
And under, and under what are you referring it? Without having the specificity of the different elements to which you're referring it, as your staff person, I'm a little...
If, two weeks from now, we took a different vote...
Angst about that.
And, and this one won't, this one won't stand on its own, and, and I don't see, I, I think it's wrong, I think it's wrong for us to take a vote that can't stand on its own. And I don't think that vote can, I don't think a simple vote to refer it could stand on its own.
Yeah.
So, I'm uncomfortable with it.
You think we have to back it up with...
I think we have to back it up.
Yes, I do.
I think if we're going to do it, we should do it right, and put the, put the findings and the reasons in it, so that it stands a chance, because otherwise, otherwise the applicant can, can challenge us on the decision that, that doesn't have any teeth to it, so...
I believe, Mary, to the, to your point, that what we want to do is make sure that we do this the right way, right? So if we...
I agree.
We have, if we make a, if we make a recommendation, and I really feel strongly that we're heading in that direction, we've got three topics, let's substantiate those topics with facts, right? Manage it with facts, and do the right thing.
And make that all as part of the motion?
Exactly.
Maybe we have five.
Well, could be.
We could have 10, according to those, if we wanted to.
I don't know that we should say, if we're not going to vote on it, and we're not going to spell it out tonight, I don't think we should say, we have three topics identified, and we're going to do something.
No, but I think we can, I think we can give our, our staff person some, some guidances to the, some of the ones that we're leaning towards, so that we can try to flesh it out.
And right now, I have three.
I have, I have, personally, I have three. I like to keep it simple. You can, you can, you can make an argument for everything, right?
Yeah.
I don't know that that's truly...
A little natural system, no.
I don't know that that's truly effective, but...
Advocating that.
Anyway, I think we should, we should continue this, and we should have the vote.
So you, you have a withdrawal of...
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Second, anybody?
I'll withdraw my second.
Done.
So then, I would make a motion to continue the public hearing on...
July 9.
Where am I?
July 9.
Uh, July 9?
PB 2019-03, Harwich Retail LLC, until July 9, 2019, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second motion.
For the purpose of the board further discussing its...
Technical, technical referral.
No, 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 no.
It's referrals.
No, it's a refer, it's a, it's not a technical.
Okay.
Not based on what you were discussing.
Nice second, your motion.
Okay, all in favor?
I don't know that we need that much detail. Do we need the detail, or should we just say that we're continuing it until...
So we have a motion, we have a second?
So I'm going to slightly amend my motion, I'm, I'm going to...
Sorry, folks, you have to hear this.
Move to continue the public hearing on PB 2019-03, Harwich Retail LLC...
To July 9.
To July 9, 2019, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second, your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. You can vote.
Okay.
The next issue?
Can you let them clear out, and I need to use the ladies' room? Can we take a five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess, please.
How are you?
I'm great, I'm doing very well, thank you. So, the next, the next topic we have is a continuation of PB 2019-18, Samil Patel as applicant, and we, we have really a revised motion based on engineering and planning comments, so we're going to vote...
No, you get, you want to hear from them.
We want to hear from you first, but we've got...
And then I'll provide some...
For the record, you want to read this into the record.
I want to do several things.
Very good. Okay, gents, you've got the floor. It's a lot cooler in here, all of a sudden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. For the record, I'm Howard Kahoon, I'm here with Samil Patel, the petitioner, I'm his attorney. Basically, we just wanted to say that we had met with our engineer, who's also here this evening, and I think we've addressed all of the problems that the neighbors had, and that is, we're going to put a row of Leland cypresses right here at the edge of the parking lot. This down here shows a side view from Ruggies, if you will, the building, the parking, a slight retaining wall to here, and then the Leland cypresses, and we're going to hope to create, the rest of the area is just going to remain normal, we're going to obviously try to keep as much natural trees, there's a lot of good vegetation and growth there. We've...
There's a pitch to that, though, right?
Rick, what sheet is that?
This is sheet number what?
What this is?
We don't have that.
No.
Oh, we don't?
I was going to say, we don't have that, I definitely...
This is a cross-section to show you what it looks like, I'm sorry.
If we can get that for the file, that'd be terrific.
Absolutely.
That'd be terrific.
I'd like to have it in front of me right now.
Well, you, this is...
Being close, so I can read it.
Anyway, that was to take care of the neighbors, I think they're satisfied, they're not here tonight, they've told us that they're satisfied. Lot of natural vegetation over here that's going to stay. We've, we've increased the number of spaces so that we have plenty, we can do away with what the engineer thinks is obstructing the dumpsters, and still comply and so forth. I don't want to take too much of your time, I reviewed the revised motion that Charlene has put together, and, you know, it calls for a lot of things that are going to definitely comply with, and we have no problem with that motion, and we'd like to have your vote positively on that, and certainly, if you have some questions, you're here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kahoon.
Do you have a question?
Wait, wait, one second, Charlene?
No, if somebody has a question...
Go ahead.
Mr. Kahoon.
You're good.
Where the dumpster is, does that retaining wall go, continue around and end?
No, it goes right around, wraps around it.
All the way around?
Yes.
Okay.
Right across the line. Right across the lot.
Right across the back of the lot?
Correct.
Retaining wall?
You, you guys have that?
Oh, that's not that.
That's not that.
Okay.
Cause the original plan is just a grade, correct?
Yes, it's a, yeah, it's a grade, yeah.
Can I just ask, through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the bottom part of that plan, am I looking, am I looking at that from parallel street or?
You're looking at it from Ruggies, right here. Ruggies is, is right.
Oh, so that's side, that's the side of it.
That's the side, yeah.
So we don't have a, we don't have a rear view of that?
No, we don't, but the, the rear view fence of the neighbors is way up here.
Okay.
And they're gonna be looking over the fence and they're gonna see maybe.
Cypress trees.
But we're gonna have the cypress trees which are gonna grow up. And we also have the natural vegetation which is there at the moment anyway.
And the neighbors you're referring to was?
Peter Antonellis and Susan, his wife.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Oh, and by the way, I have, I, before I forget, I have the green cards which you may want for your records.
I'll take those. I was more concerned about the white ones. To show that you really sent them.
Oh, I have those.
I'll take those, too.
Mr. McFarlane.
I'm not sure where they are.
Okay.
I just have two questions. First of all, is this gentleman also the owner of the, where the liquor store is next door?
Yes.
Not the building, though.
No, we, we rent.
Your tenants there, I understand that.
That's right, yes. And this is Samuel's father, Gary Samuel. And LA is Samuel's brother, two boys, mother and father.
Yes.
And it's, they, they run the business.
So they'll end up running both businesses?
We'll, we'll move the convenience component up to the new store. The liquor store will stay where it is. And we hope to have a deli, as you've heard, in conjunction with the convenience store, a takeout situation.
And the convenience store is gonna be up on the street?
Correct, in the new building, in the new structure, right here.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Craig?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Last time we met, there was a question about the, the slope in the rear of the property from the end of the parking lot to the rear of the property line. And Joe and I expressed a little bit of concern about drainage and slope and so forth. And you mentioned the possibility of having your engineer put a stone wall there. And I think, Charlene, correct me if I'm wrong, you said something additional was required? Or would it, was it just needed to be shown on the site plan?
They need to show it on the site plan and also give us a, a detail of it, and we do have that.
So, does the detail of it, or is there a need, has our town engineer seen that in terms of? I guess that's a yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It hasn't been my turn yet.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm surprised you people are still laughing, but that's great.
You have to.
That's good. Charlene, please.
Okay, sorry, sorry Craig, no, that, that's okay.
That's, you answered the question.
So we did get the plans in from the applicant a little bit late, but we were able to pull together to, to do this review. In my staff report, I've gotta get to the right page. As I said last time, the proposed changes, this'll be a vast improvement, not only to the property, but also to the neighborhood. Additional comments will be tonight, which I will do. Waivers are reasonable. And D doesn't belong there because it doesn't belong there. So anyway, so the town engineer did review the revised plans. I could go through all his comments if you want and address them. Or I can just say that we've addressed them through whatever you'd like. Oh, I'm happy to go through them.
How about the abridged version?
So the abridged version, on the site plan itself, there are two parking spaces that are shown in front of the dumpster. Our recommendation is that those be removed because they actually only need 23 parking spaces. They're showing 25. And on the June 25, June 3rd version of the plan, you showed hatched marks there. So if we just take the two parking spaces out that say employee, and, and that's in the modified condition or motion that I provided you this evening. The other is, by doing that, we address the concern that was had about, you know, being able to get in and out of those with the truck. So that's been addressed. The painted sidewalk does need to comply with the town sidewalk policy, which we can do as a condition, and that's included. The retaining, the timber guardrail, just a comment that was raised. Does, nothing needs to be changed, but what the town engineer said on, particularly on the, the west side, is, is that timber guardrail gonna be enough if somebody doesn't stop? So, you know, whether you decide to put that on the concrete wall itself, make the concrete wall part of that to, to make it so people won't go flying over, it's about a four-foot drop. Hopefully, people will be responsible. The infiltration, proposed infiltration system, between what's drawn on the plan and the note on the plan is a little bit off. It says that there's gonna be two and a half feet of crushed stone all the way around. But I don't think you meant to say that because obviously the, the, the galleys themselves are gonna be closer together. There, I believe there's two and a half feet in between each galley. That's not a problem. Drainage complies. They did go from two drainage, assist drainage catch basins down to one. If they do feel that during construction, that they do need to add a second one. As long as it's shown on the as-built plan, it won't change anything, except if they realize that they need more drainage. A couple of things that we're recommending as conditions are that the sidewalks have to comply with ADA and/or Mass Architectural Access Board requirements and standards. The, we do not have a, a detailed grading plan depicting the proposed sidewalk and ramp elevations. Those weren't provided, but they do need to be built in compliance with ADA and Mass Architectural Access Board AAB. Wheelchair ramp, the detail was wrong, but that can be addressed. And again, the crosswalk. So what I have provided for you, and I also discussed this with Megan Eldridge as far as the septic system. Cause that was a question that had come up at the last meeting by the butters. Whether the septic system was gonna be adequate for the deli. She looked at it and based on the numbers, it's fine. There may be a component that needs to change a little bit. Has nothing to do with this board. It's totally with the Board of Health. So at this time, you know, staff is supportive of this. I have provided you, it's gonna get a little confusing. The, the, my motions that I prepared for you do start on page seven of the staff report. So you would have to vote on the waivers, you would have to adopt the findings of fact. There is the mixed-use, vote for the mixed-use special permit. The last page, this takes over the last page and adds several more conditions to what we are recommending. I think this can all be handled this evening. And particularly through getting, when they do the as-built plan, they will need to address all, all these items. So I'm happy to review the recommendations that we have for conditions, if you'd like.
So, Ms. Maslovsky?
Sorry, two quick questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question that, that maybe I missed something.
Mary's.
Mary, uh, just give me a second.
So two quick questions. One, was the parking, I seem to recall when people were talking about the takeout, does the parking address?
Yes, it does.
Does the parking address the takeout? Okay.
It does, yes.
So I, I thought that was a question from last time.
It was, and they have addressed that.
Okay, so my second, really more a comment for those listening, I think the applicants already know this. Historic District, just to point out that because Historic didn't see retaining walls and those things, when you, when they come back, the Historic Commission will still have to probably amend. It's probably an amendment to the certificate of appropriateness that, that was approved just for the look and feel details that changed from Planning Board. But I think we discussed that at Historic before you came to Planning Board. I just wanted to point that out. Particularly because of the, we may, I don't recall whether we saw the lighting, but particularly because of the retaining wall. If you're seeing, if, anything that's seen from. The, the street or the, or the public way. So, parallel Main Street. So, just pointing that out. I, I, I love it, so. I'm thrilled, but I just wanna point that out.
Mr. Harris, David, please.
You know, I just got this packet this afternoon.
Yep.
The drawing that was described is not in it. I hate, I can't read that 10 feet away. Am I being asked to vote on that plan tonight? If so, I think you can guess what my vote would be.
Well, no disrespect, packets were ready last week. Electronic, packets were ready for pickup last week. Electronic packets were sent out last week. You're right, we did not have this plan. This is the first I'm seeing this plan. But based on what had already been submitted, all this is, is a cross-section. And the town engineer feels that this meets all requirements from an engineering standpoint. This was not necessarily necessary for his review. It's just a very good depiction of what it's gonna look like. But from an engineering standard, the town engineer was satisfied with what was submitted by the applicants and stamped by their engineer. So I.
Could I take a moment to just, take two seconds, Mr. Chairman, to just show him this or?
Please.
It appeared to be germane to the vote made.
I, I think, yeah, I.
No, of course I can be.
Go ahead.
Mr. Stokes is.
Yes.
So here's the building.
I understand where the building is and I understand the retaining wall. I can read the drawings.
Yes, sir.
I just haven't seen it. I don't know what the piling are. Obviously, the engineering details for the retaining wall and the guardrail, the people falling over the edge are.
You're good?
I just wanted to look at it.
So there's a, there's a, one of the great things about this board is there are a lot of different skills that we have, right? We're blessed to have an architect. We're blessed to have a couple of very good attorneys, some contractors, firefighters, public servants, retired beat-up executives. Thanks for sharing that. And David, thank you very much for speaking up. Thanks. Okay? So Craig?
Want to close?
No, I'm sorry.
Craig, one.
Quick question, and I'm sure it's here and I probably have read it three times. Hours of operation, is that a condition?
Actually, we have not discussed hours of operation.
Let's discuss hours of operation.
Just based on the last application, we do have a town bylaw regarding noise.
Yep.
Cannot be noisy from, you know, before 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM at night. So, they would have to abide by that as well, but certainly if the board wants to impose.
So what, what exactly are the hours of operation?
What are you on period now, where you are?
Six to 11.
So right now, in the convenience store and the package store, six in the morning to 11 o'clock at night? Is that all year round?
No, in wintertime, it's 7 to 10.
Seven to 10 in the wintertime?
This is only in seasonal times.
Six to 11. So that's what they do at the moment where they are.
Yep.
They can be open, it's just they can't have, you know, deliveries, noise, trash removed, that kind of thing, before 7:00 AM or after 10:00 PM.
Right.
That's what we'd hope to continue to do, but.
All right.
Can I recommend we do 9:00 PM for, for trash pickup and deliveries? Just because you've got neighbors right behind there, you've got an inn, there's houses.
On the previous application, it, I had recommended between, bleh, sorry, my brain is turning to mush. No deliveries or trash pickup.
Before 7?
Before 7 or after 9.
Okay, would that be acceptable?
That's very reasonable, we accept that.
And Charlene, would we insert that into?
That would be condition of approval, that would be the.
The last.
Yes.
Any more comments from the board?
Nope.
Any comments from the audience? Anybody? Sure.
Move to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, do we hear some motion?
To prove, move, to approve the waivers pursuant to paragraph 400 to include planned notations for the following, based on the facts presented by the applicant. One, any variance is granted for the property. Two, approval and/or restrictions of the Board of Health. Three, gross area of wetlands and uplands and marked areas subject to the Wetland Protection Act. Four, marked areas set aside for conservation and/or recreation areas. And five, easements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. I'm, I'm not opposed, I'm for it, but.
Move to adopt the following findings of fact. The property is loc, one, the property is located within the CB zoning district and the Howard Center overlay district. Two, the redevelopment of this parcel will be a positive improvement to the neighborhood and the district. Three, parking for the proposed uses has been satisfied on-site and complies with the requirements of Article 9 Off-Street Parking Regulations and paragraph 325-51 point O parenth, five point B close parenth. Four, one curb cut onto Main Street will be eliminated and two additional on-street parking spaces can be created. Five, the project has already received review and approvals from the Historic District and the Historical Commission. Six, the waivers requested do not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of this bylaw. Seven, the commercial area makes up more than the required 33% of the floor area of the building or buildings, and it is located at the front of the building, facing the street, and shall be located on the ground level. Eight, there is a required minimum of 10,000 square feet of lot area per residential unit. Nine, screening of parking complies, of parking complies with the provisions of 325-43. Ten, dimensional requirements have been met.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, carries.
Move to approve case number PB 2019-18 Samuel Patel as applicant, care of Howard Cahoon representative. Eli and Rabbi Basil trustees et al. as owners for a mixed-use special permit pursuant to 325-51M for the construction of a retail store with two dwelling units above for property located at 711 Main Street, map 41, parcel D8, in the C-V-H-C overlay zoning district. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the code of the town of Howard.
Second. Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Do I need this, too?
You need this sheet, yep, cause you have to, that's, now this is the vote on the site plan. And the floor area and.
Move to approve with conditions, case number PB 2019-18 Samuel Patel as applicant, care of Howard Cahoon representative. Eli, or Eli, E-L-I-E, and Rabbi Basil trustees et al. as owners for a site plan re-use special permit with waivers pursuant to paragraph 325-55 and use special permit for structures with a gross floor area greater than 7,500 square feet and structures requiring 20 or more new parking spaces pursuant to 325-9 and Howard Center overlay special permit pursuant to 325-51O. The redevelopment of property by. The redevelop of property by raising a former gas station and constructing a retail store with two dwelling units above for property located at 711 Main Street, map 41, parcel D8 in the C-V-H-C overlay zoning district. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard with the following conditions. A, all signage shall comply with the sign code and building department requirements. B, outdoor lighting shall comply with Article 21, including any required shielding of lights as required. C, the two parking spaces in front of the dumpster enclosures shall be removed and crosshatching on the ground shall be installed to restrict parking in this area, and this shall be shown on the as-built plan. D, the crosswalk at the entrance shall comply with the Town of Howard's crosswalk policy requirements, and this shall be shown on the as-built. E, although the drainage plan complies with town requirements, if it is determined at the time of construction that an additional drainage structure is necessary, this may be added and shall be shown on the as-built plan. F, revised drainage calculation shall be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit to confirm that the calculation and the design of the drainage system are consistent relative to the stone around the galleys. G, sidewalks shall be constructed in accordance with the ADA Mass, AAB requirement standards and shall be shown on the as-built plan. H, a revised detail for the wheelchair ramp shall be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit. I, any changes to the used special permit of the site plan may require further site plan review by the planning board. J, this decision shall be recorded at the Boncival Registry of Ds. And K, conformance with all review procedures requirements outlined pursuant to paragraph 418G inspection certificate of completion and as-built plan of the Code of the Town of Howard shall be met.
Would you, would you entertain an additional, that says no deliveries and/or trash pickup before 7:00 AM or after 9:00 PM?
I would, if you make it.
I'll make it. I'll make it.
Okay, and I accept the amendment.
All right. I'll second it.
I'll second. Okay.
Second motion?
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries.
Good luck, wish you well.
All the best.
Thank you very much.
I think that's going to be a great improvement for down here.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have another, excuse me, I'm sorry. We have another continuation, PB 2019-20. Mark and Andrea Toomey. Mark and Andrea Toomey, care of J. Thaddeus Eldridge.
Thank you.
PLS East Southeast Inc. seeks approval of a two-lot definitive subdivision pursuant as general law, code 31, section 81K, dash GG, and section 400 of the Code of the Town of Harwich for property located at zero Long Pond Drive, map 102, parcel E1-2 in the R-R zoning district, continued from 6/11/2019.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
For the record, I'm Thad Eldridge, East Southeast. Mark Toomey is in the audience with me.
Go, Mr. Toomey.
Thank you. And we're here to talk about the definitive subdivision plan. As you may recall, the preliminary was very extensive, so we have little to talk about tonight. We have returned with a subdivision that includes a full cul-de-sac, be it oddly shaped. We would have had a drainage easement tucked in this corner, so we just included that within the road layout. We do have a number of waivers that have been requested. Essentially the same design that we had before, where we have a road coming in. Due to the topography on this lot, we're bobbling the road around. We are asking for a waiver for the two catch basins because we're putting all the water on one side of the road where we're putting a double catch basin. And we're coming up to the cul-de-sac area. The other waivers are about the road construction itself, but as this is two lots, it'll have minimal traffic. If there are any questions, and I realize that it, the meeting is running late, so I'm more than happy to join.
It's the joy of the planning board.
I can go on if you'd like.
Are there any questions by any of the planning board members? Charlene, why don't you start?
Thank you. The approximate limit of clearing is shown to the property lines on the east and west sides of the proposed road. I have questioned what will be used to ensure that clearing does not encroach onto abutting properties. I have recommended a condition be imposed stating that hay bales and silt fencing shall be installed along the limit of clearing lines as shown on the plan and profile sheet four of seven, except for that portion of said line along Long Pond Road, and should remain in place until such time as the slopes are stabilized with loaming and seeding, which is also germinated. There are several planned notes on the plan indicating waivers. These may change, and they have changed. The request is also for Panhandle Lot to serve as frontage and access for Lot 2, and it does meet the requirements. Quinopoxit Way appears to be the preferred road name, even though I have trouble saying it, but it is the preferred road name. And I do recommend that standard conditions be imposed. We did receive, based on the staff report submitted, that was prepared for last week. It was sent to the applicant, along with rec, uh, comments from the town engineer. The, um, Thad did submit revised plans yesterday. We were able to get those reviewed in time for tonight, and based on that, I have made a couple of changes to the recommended, uh, two additional waivers on the, which is vote number two, waivers of subdivision rules and regs. The seven being allow the distance from High Point to Catch Basin to exceed the 200 feet. And eight, allow for the lack of catch basins on both sides of the road. And as far as approval, I did add one additional condition to the conditions that were recommended. No driveway drainage shall be allowed to flow into the street unless the applicant revises the road drainage to accommodate the additional flow. So that's based on the plans that we did receive from Thad yesterday.
Could I ask for one modification of one of those? The hay bale or siltation fencing? Could we have an and/or, an as needed? Because I don't think we need a silt fence and hay bales at the top of the hill, at the edge of the clearing. Oh, I'm sorry.
Shirley.
I, I would rely on, on our staff.
I, I mean-
With due respect.
My, in my opinion, as long as it's along the property line.
Yep.
Once you get to the, the head of the cul-de-sac, it's entirely on their own property. My concern is because there is going to be drain, or grading that goes right to the property line, we don't want that encroaching onto the abutting properties.
Yep.
So at the head of the, um, the cul-de-sac, which is, if you can see, I can't see it, sorry. But where the, the head of the cul-de-sac is, that is their own property. But along the property lines, certainly there needs to be hay bales and silt fencing.
And I could see that on the downhill side of the property, but on the uphill side, the water's going to flow away from hay bale or silt fence.
It's still a matter of, it's not so much erosion that I'm concerned about. It's encroachment onto neighboring property.
Somebody else's property.
We'd be happy to put up construction fencing there, but we don't need-
No, no, we're going to put hay bales there.
Okay?
Okay. I don't think that's a big deal to ask.
Motion to close the public hearing.
No, no, you have to ask for public input.
Oh, sorry.
Ready to go. Anybody in the audience?
I know she's been waiting very patiently.
She has, it's been a long night.
I'm sorry, I have a very bad cold, but, or allergies. I am Donna Eaton, and I live on 159 Long Pond Drive. And I bought this development for eight hundred some odd feet on the low side. And I'm a bit taken aback because I thought this was preliminary hearings. I didn't realize these had gone on as far as they have. Because we just got the notice to come to the last meeting when it was continued. So, anyway, um, knowing the topography of the land, I'm very, um, I'm on that low side for quite a bit. And, um, I'm not sure how that's going to be dealt with, but it looks like it would have to be almost clear-cut for those two and a half acres, or two and some odd acres, to accommodate two houses and a road and a cul-de-sac. Several years ago, this came up for a two-lot subdivision with the previous owner. And it was, um, it was, it was dropped, and we, it was not proposed again. Another one of my neighbors, Paul Thompson, who was not here tonight, his mother actually sold the property to the previous person. And it was with the gentleman's type of agreement that it would only be one house put back there. Now, I know that a handshake doesn't stand for anything these days, but, um, we, we, as a neighborhood, are all concerned, many of which I couldn't get to come tonight because they knew prior was going to happen. And they said, "We're not sitting through that," so, but, um, the, the general consensus of the neighborhood was, why clear-cut two and a half acres of woods that's landlocked? My other concern is, in the very front of the property where the driveway is, to the east, is a house that has a wetlands right in it, front of it, right along Long Pond Drive. And I'm, I don't know how big that road needs to be, but there's only probably thirty to fifty feet to that wetlands from where the existing cart path is now. My final concern is that in the, where the three lots come together, Thompson's Lot on Long Pond Drive, my lot, and the proposed subdivision, is in White Cedar Swamp. And it, it will be catching most of the drainage. That's the low point on, on the three pieces of land. So I'm concerned about that as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I was remiss and did not, because the last hearing, it was continued without testimony, if I might. Building, uh, from the building department, building permits will be required. Conservation, any activity within 100 feet of a wetland will require conservation approval. So if there is anything happening within 100 feet of a wetland, it would have to go through conservation. This is not in a natural heritage jurisdiction, so that doesn't weigh in on this. The Health Department, um, had reviewed this at, as a preliminary plan, so the Health Director had the authority to, to authorize the, um, the definitive approval based on the preliminary, and the board unanimously, at, back then, approved that lots shall be served by town water. And a fully compliant septic system are required to serve the dwellings. So that, those are the conditions on the plan. Police had no concern except for the name. And some of the, the comments raised by the butter are why I want to be sure that there's a, a good delineation of the property line, so that nothing will encroach-
Correct.
-onto the, the neighboring property. There's nothing precluding them, once this is approved, of, if they want to clear-cut that lot, they can. We hope that they don't, but, you know, certainly the, the area to put the road in, there's going to have to be a lot of clearing.
Yeah, that's their, their prerogative. Joe.
Ma'am, can you tell us, um, what's the size of your property? I'm sorry?
Six point nine four acres.
Thank you.
The answer was six point nine four acres, because nobody could hear that.
Which lot is it?
It's this one.
Ms. Eaton, could you stand up at the, sorry about that, but we can hear you better.
We're, we're map 102, and we, on the west side of that property.
Yep.
And we have a vernal pool on one section of the land and a cedar swamp on another.
On your land?
Yes.
Mrs. Eaton?
Yeah.
Through Mr. Chair, you're, you go all the way up to Long Pond Drive, correct?
Yes.
So you're, you abut both the Thompson's property and then both parcel, Lot 1 and Lot 2 of the, of the subdivision?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any more comments? I guess we know where you stand, Mr. Dootson.
And, and also just to, to remind the board, this did come in as a preliminary, so when it comes in as a definitive, the board does have 90 days to act on, on a plan. You are still well within that 90 days. So please don't feel rushed, I'm holding back a sneeze here, so bear with me. So the board does have until early August to render a decision and file that with the town clerk. So, you know, don't feel like you need to make a decision tonight. If you feel comfortable doing so, absolutely, but you don't have to make a decision this evening if you, if you want to think about things.
Bill, please.
Think of it as a state law that when they do this, they have to provide a means of no erosion to any abutters.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Correct.
Otherwise, they're responsible for, and that, she would be protected that way.
Yep. And I think, uh, I, I do think that's what Mr. McParland was concerned about as well.
Oh, he asked, size of the lot.
Yeah, there is a state.
Yep.
I, I didn't know about that statute, but I-
Yep, no, it's good. I think that was made pretty clear, and I, I'm glad you both brought that up. So, any more comments? Do I hear any motions?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Motion to adopt and approve the following findings of fact related to the definitive subdivision. One, said subdivision for residential uses are permitted use in the R-R zoning district. Two, said subdivision does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, all lot demonstrate, demonstrate, all lots demonstrate compliance with minimum dimensional requirements for frontage and shape. Four, border health requirements shall be met. Five, proposed road construction satisfies all requirements, including the grade of the road pursuant to 400-12 through 14. And 400, uh, appendix 1, the rational method of drainage design, and append, and appendix 2 tables 1 through 4.
Second.
We can go back, there's another vote that needs to happen.
I'm going to keep going.
You missed the special permit for the Panhandle, you can go back to that.
Oh, oh, I understand, I saw that, sorry about that.
That's okay, we can catch that.
Let's, let's, let's finish this, right?
Yes. Motion and second.
Yeah, it's, so, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You opposed? You're good. Okay. So, carries.
Yeah, I'll keep going with the definitive decision, and then we'll go back to the Panhandle.
Okay.
Motion to approve the following waivers from the subdivision rules and regulations pursuant to paragraph 400, Article 2. The existing topography provides a great challenge to design a road that meets the minimum design recommendations. As this is a two-lot, subdivision waivers are requested to better work with the existing topography. Two, the vertical curve at the entrance does not meet the minimum 100-foot design recommendation. Three, the calculated site distances within subdivisions are just over 100 feet, over 100 feet where the minimum design recommendation is 200 feet. Four, the location of the paved road from the beginning to station 1 plus 60 deviates from the center of the road with two 150-foot radius horizontal curves. Five, the width of the road has been reduced to 16 feet with one-foot Cape Cod berms, two-foot shoulder, and two-dash-one side slopes. Six, the proposed catch basin at the intersection of the proposed road and Long Pond Drive is within Long Pond Drive. Seven, allow the distance from High Point to Catch Basin to exceed 200 feet. Eight, allow the lack of catch basins on both sides of the road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carries.
To approve with conditions, PB two thousand nineteen dash twenty, Mark and Andrea Toomey, care of J. Thaddeus Eldridge, PLS East Southeast Inc., for a two-lot subdivision pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-one, paragraph eighty-one K dash GG, and four hundred of the Code of the Town of Howard for property located at zero Long Pond Drive, map one oh two, parcel E one two, on the R-R zoning district, as shown on a plan entitled definitive subdivision plan, standard four eight two thousand nineteen, revised five twenty-four two thousand nineteen, and six thirteen two thousand nineteen. Scale one inch to fifty feet, sheet one for quinopoxit way, Mark and Andrea Toomey, prepared by East Southeast LLC, the following conditions are imposed. One, hay bales and silt fencing shall be installed prior to any clearing and/or road construction along the limit of clearing lines as shown on the plan and profile sheet four of seven. Expect for that T portion of said line along Long Pond Road and should remain in place until such time as the slopes are stabilized with looming and seeding, which has germinated. Two, no driveway drainage, drainage shall be allowed to flow into the street unless the applicant reviews the road drainage to accommodate the additional flow.
Revises.
Revises the road.
What did I say?
Reviews.
Revises the road.
Oh, revises the road.
Yep.
The road shall be known as quinopoxit way and shall be charged on the plan prior to endorsement. Four, this decision, following the expiration of the twenty-day appeal permit, shall be recorded at the Bonsham County Registry Deeds, usually, with a copy returned to the town clerk and the planning board for their case file. Five, a standard planning board agreement and covenant shall be fully executed and recorded at the Bonsham County Registry Deeds with a copy returned to the town clerk and the planning board for the case file. Six, the applicant shall follow all requirements and inspections for the construction of the way.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, no opposition? Carries.
And we have to clean up one other thing.
You need to clean up, if you can go back to page three.
Right at the...
It's just the finding and facts for the Panhandle Lot.
Okay, I'm with you. Motion to adopt and approve the following findings of fact related to the request for Panhandle Lots. One, lot frontage and lot width within the Panhandle portion is thirty-five feet wide. Two, the length of the Panhandle portion is two hundred and forty-six feet. Three, suitable access by a driveway to such lot is provided within the Panhandle, and the access is wide enough and otherwise satisfactory for a driveway. Four, the Panhandle Lot meets the shape number requirements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Carries. Respect your neighbor's thoughts.
We'll do our best.
Thad, that revised plan you gave me also needs to be stamped by the town engineer. Or by, by your engineer.
Very good.
Yeah, we don't want to hold that up.
Panhandle Lots. Yeah, yeah.
So before...
Just to roll straighten out. I don't know why they have that.
I think we changed the zoning.
Yeah.
We changed the zoning.
Maybe, yeah.
For the Panhandle, yeah, the, the, yeah.
We're good. We're good, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Zoning did change to allow for Panhandle Lots.
See it.
That's probably why.
Okay, so the next, we have the public meeting section, and we have new business. Any new business?
All you got's meeting, uh, meeting minutes.
Okay, meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the minutes that were sent to us, and I move that we adopt, I think there's five of them.
It's April ninth, May fourteenth, May thirtieth, and June eleventh.
That's what I said, yeah.
I thought you did.
One, two, three, four.
Second.
All in favor of accepting the minutes as they are?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There's a God in heaven, thank you. Any advisory opinions, Board of Appeals, six twenty-six nineteen? This is the infamous...
zoning Board of Appeals agenda.
Which I don't even have a copy of.
This is the, this, this is...
There you go.
Is this, is this Port and Perks?
No.
No, no, no.
I don't think they're in here.
No.
Can I see?
You can. Anything in there, Mary?
Oh, I'm sorry. Case number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one.
They are.
The brackets...
Yes.
... are appealing a non-enforcement of the building official regarding an encroaching non-conforming structure at the abutting property known as Perks. Five forty-five Route twenty-eight, the application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, three twenty-five forty-five, so forth and so on. The property in question is located at five forty-five Route twenty-eight. And I think I read in the paper, there was a little issue between them.
With the shells.
With the shells. Somebody dumped a whole pile of shells or something on somebody else's property.
Yep, so that was handled.
Don't comment.
No, no comment on that, is what it is. No. So the Board of Appeals, that's this Thursday, that's correct, right?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Tomorrow.
Oh, today's the twenty-fifth, correct. So that's tomorrow.
Six months till Christmas.
Six thirty.
Stop it.
I saw a cartoon, sorry.
Six thirty PM or six PM?
They need it seven.
Seven.
If I may ask the question?
Please.
Is there any, through you, Mr. Chair, to our beloved town planner, is there any appropriate message for us to send to them, other than...
Nothing in this meeting...
Nope.
Thank you.
... pops up. At the next meeting, there will be one, which I will make sure to bring to your attention, because the board said that you, they would make the recommendation.
Yeah.
On Deerfield.
Oh, yes.
But on this, I have nothing.
Not for this one.
Any, anything else?
Including the five forty-one Main Street.
Anything else on the advisory opinions, Board of Appeals? Any old business? Any briefings and reports by board members? Do I hear them?
Thad Longley has not been sitting. We will start again after the summer, probably.
All right, Joe, that's good. Thank you. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.